May I... ...say... Oh boy. You're not leaving, huh? Yes, I'm not. I'll be gone. May we please all rise for the singing of the National Anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng puso sa titipoy buhay. Lupang hiniram, duya ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakit ng toka. May hilang ang tula at awit sa paglayang nilawal. Ang kisap ng wata at mo'y kamupay naratingin. Ang pituming na paro nyakayla, mapay matidiling. Lupan ang maraw ng war, aming pagsikap. Uyay lami sa titipon. Aming likaya dapat may magapin. At lamatay ng darilang sayo.
May I request everybody to remain silent for a moment of prayer. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members: Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansha, Assistyo, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Basko, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tunggalaw, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Co Pilar, Co Juango Jaime Eduardo Mark, Co Juango Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Dagoa, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Vinesia, Defensor, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Dutorte, Di Fustino Ino, Di Fustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo Gian, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga Ara, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Dafni, Lagon Sani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magcino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Maniquis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padearnos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulug, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodoro, Tevez, Tiangko, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Juseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Totor, Ti, Umali, Unabya, Ungag, Uy, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Verzosa, Villia, Villia Ferte Luis Raymond, Villia Ferte Miguel Luis, Villianueva, Villar, Villiarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Chrishantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jiesel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 196 members responded to the call.
With 196 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a court of... Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of Journal Number 57 dated March 5, 2024, and Journal Number 58 dated March 6, 2024, were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading thereof and subsequently to approve the said journals. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The reading of Journal Number 57 dated March 5, 2024 and Journal Number 58 dated March 6, 2024 is dispensed with and the same is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the Bills and Resolutions on First Reading as well as the Communications and Committee Reports.
Is there any objection? There being none, the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the titles of the Bills and Resolutions on First Reading.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 10071, Providing Enhanced Protection, Security, and Benefits for Media and Entertainment Workers by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 10072, Requiring the Provision of Infant-Friendly Facilities in Government Agencies and Other Establishments by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Welfare and Children.
House Bill 10073, Establishing the Marinduke Sports Training Center in Mogpoog, Marinduke by Representative Velasco.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 10074, Confirming and Declaring the Validity of Existing Transfer Certificates of Title and Reconstituted Certificates Covering Friar Lands by Representative Rodriguez Rufos.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 10075, Regulating and Modernizing the Practice of Medical Laboratory Science in the Philippines by Representative Rodriguez Rufos.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 10076, Reclassifying a Parcel of Land of the Public Domain Located in Barangay Spuntod and Makabalan, Kagayan de Oro City, Mesames Oriental as Agricultural Land and Open to Disposition by Representative Rodriguez Rufos.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
Resolutions. House Resolution 1631, Expressing Profound Condolences of the House of Representatives on the Demise of Mary Jane Santa Anna Gok or Jacqueline Jose by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1632, Directing the Committee on Women and Gender Equality to Conduct an Inquiry on the Recent Trends in Violence Against Women and Children in Light of Advances in Information and Communications Technology by Representative Brosas.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communication. Letter dated February 28, 2024 of the BSP Bank Officer 6, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, Transmitting to the House of Representatives Julie Certified Copies of Certain BSP Issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Reports. Committee Report Numbers 991, 992, and 993 Submitted by the Committee on Justice on House Bill Numbers 10084, 10085, and 10086 respectively.
To the Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business. Communication. Letter dated March 11, 2024 of the Deputy Executive Secretary for Legal Affairs, Office of the President, Malacanyang, Transmitting back to the House of Representatives the Seven Enrolled Copies of Senate Bill Number 2221, House Bill Number 7325 and Titled "An Act Providing for the Magna Carta of Filipino Seafarers" in Compliance with Concurrent Resolution Number 14.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports. Committee Report Numbers 994 to 1005 Submitted by the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 10094 to 10105 respectively.
The aforementioned Committee Reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Eric Yap, namely: Rose Magno, Bobby Bilango, Emily Compass, Anita Andres, Mesinda Dolinen, Dani Pigaod, Priscilla Liwan, and Emmet Area Lunguiz.
To the guests of Congressman Eric Yap, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Erwin Tieng, namely Chairman Melchor Salazar, Chairman Roderick Relivo, Chairman Manuel Luna, Chairman Rina Carinho, Chairman Marc Anthony Torcelino, Chairman Victor Asherto, Chairman Rosendo Quinones, Chairman Arnold Palo, Chairman Normita Salud, Chairman Armando Gadi, Chairman Divina Antike, Chairman Franimar Delphine, Chairman Jaime Adriano, Chairman Enriqueita Platon, Chairman Edgar Zabarte, Chairman Salvador Ladran Junior, Chairman Danilo Samudio, Chairman Gina Madriaga, Chairman Augusto Dayang, Chairman Alfredo Tan, Chairman Marian Buen Viaje, Chairman Edeline Diman Hig, Chairman Donato Isidoro, Chairman Jennifer Dato, Chairman Arturo Mariano Junior, Chairman Mark Hill Cachapero, Chairman Elvira Sebrio, Chairman Felimon Totica, and Chairman Edgar Tanyamore Junior.
So mga panauhin na punong barangay ni Congresswoman Erwin Tieng mula sa lungsod ng Maynila, kayo po ay tinatanggap po namin sa mababang kapulungan.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize more guests of the Honorable Eric Yap, namely Joshua Pascho, the One Straightweight MMA World Champion from Lions Nation MMA, and with him, Edward Folayang, former ONE World Champion, Darinton Colas, Baltazar Kakay, and Jeffrey Tasho.
So mga guests ng ating masipag na kinatawan mula sa Benguet, mga taong iniidolo natin sa mixed martial arts, kayo po ay malugod po naming tinatanggap sa Kongreso. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Romeo S. Momo Senior, the Municipal Mayor of Caguait, Surigao del Sur, the Honorable Glenn Batyansila, and the Municipal Internal Affairs Service Department Head of the same municipality, namely Mr. Henry Trogillo.
To the guests of Congressman Romeo Momo from the First District of Surigao del Sur, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Jose Alvarez, the students and professors of Palawan State University, namely Joshua Agsau, Princess Kabitak Lusha Castor, Sofia Escalona, Mary Esteliero, Isabel Grande Jessica Hapson, Edjamay Hamandre, Mac Kirby Lumakang, Maria Teresa Magnay, Pia Fatima Revillas, Anthea Rea Seratubias, Gracel Mae Sumido, Army Talinting, Aurora Tehada, and Professor Zorrel Alanis Shores, and Professor Mary Jane Talatad and Mr. Marcos Miguel Bruno.
To the professors and students from Palawan State University, guests of Congressman Jose Alvarez, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Assistant Majority Leader Bernadette Escudero, First District Representative of Sorssagon, namely the Municipal Municipal Mayor of Castilla, Mayor Isagani Bong Mendoza, Barangay Captain George Leabres, Barangay SK Chairman Jobert Lorilia, SK Chairman John Harry Nolsol, SK Chairman John Rovik Manyago, SK Chairman Joshua Camacho, SK Chairman Billy Joe Navas, SK Chairman John Marc Marticio, SK Chairman Christine Pahe, SK Chairman Jory Lorica, SK Chairman Rowan Pareja Junior, SK Federation President Ronald Liadones, SK Chairman Earl Jane Lianes, SK Chairman Shanaya Mae Custodio, SK Chairman Christian Maranyo, SK Chairman Judel Lata, SK Chairman John Paul Gonzalez, SK Chairman John Melchor Candia, SK Chairman Jinky Altavano, SK Chairman James Aringo, SK Chairman Sherwin Tiamzon, SK Chairman Claro Hesalva Junior, SK Chairman John Marc Andes, SK Chairman Rica Mahabuhay, SK Chairman Leia Grace Basilio, SK Chairman Arablea Grace Seledyo, SK Chairman Kenneth Nicoletta, SK Chairman Ken Junel Liadones, SK Chairman Loren Hunter, SK Chairman Alexandra Mangampo, SK Chairman Ian Caesar Losavia, SK Chairman John Marc Lorilia, SK Chairman Ella Mae Yuson, SK Chairman Renz Lagutin, Ms. Camille Joy Mendoza, Mr. Marlon Leroy, Ms. Mia M. Mendoza, Mr. John Paul Mendoza, Ms. Kristen Carla Mendoza, and Mr. Christian Pongpong.
To the guests of Congressman Bernadette Escudero from the municipality of Castilla, Province of Sorssagon, napakaswerte po ninyo, hindi lang po maganda, masipag din po ang inyong Congresswoman. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, may we please acknowledge the guests of Honorable Arlene Brosas of Gabriela Women's Party. They are the following: Aguado Marivic, Anuran Avilina, Baltasar Ye-Yeoy Mari Lu, Verdul Cecil Carmen Weko, Chiang Qui Pearl, Cornejo Maria Earlin, David Annalisa, Jonella Maria Sheila, Ilumba Joan, Figuras Arthur, Garcia Noel, Ignacio Judy, Labao Marie Chris, Luriana Susan, Lee Maria Susil, Lucil, Yonan Estrelili, Montesa Karen, Musnis Michelle, Nabung Anna Lee, Parino Danilo, Reyes Kris Angela L., Shira Teresita, and Villiana Jan Noel M. They are divorce advocates from divorce for the Philippines now.
To the guests of Congresswoman Arlene Brosas, happy Women's Month po sa inyong lahat. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, may we also request for the acknowledgement of the following guests of Honorable Jervil Jinky Louistro from the Second District of Batangas. They are the barangay health workers of the municipality of Bawan, and they are the following: Janet Nebirka, Chodora Boongaling, Marites Alejandro, Illuminada Asi, Ilma Gabi, Glorina Marquez, Gina Senio. Gina Senio, Gina B. Magbo, Rachel B. Ilagan, Alicia Enriquez, Josie Gonzalvo, Arlyn Pasha, Rosiane Vigila, Sabina Bilyanueva, Maria Teresa Rizarro, Melvaros Dado, Soyla Tuledo, Rosalie Reyes, Angeli Anglo, Remedios Ilagan, Teresita Buhat, Elisa Aranda, Clarinda Alamang, Gemalisa Liento, Maylin Ogpak, Annabelle Johnson, Arlyn Hernandez, Annalisa Makalipay, Mark Ibrual, Rhoda Paredes, Mercidita Mendoza, Marilin Hernandez, and Cecile Marquez. And the district staffs who are the following: Ronnie Marquez, Zakil Kumia, and Chris John Sampan.
So mga masisipag na barangay health workers mula sa bayan ng Bawan, welcome to the House of Representatives. Walakpakampu natin sila. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we would like to acknowledge the guests of Honorable Steve Chiang Bian Solon from the Lone District of Sarangani. These are officials from Malapatan, Sarangani Province. They are Mayor Salway D. Sumbo Junior, Barangay Captain Rolando G. Bandiola, Barangay Captain Gadwin El Saludes, Barangay Captain Elizalde Segafu, Barangay Captain Arnell M. Peko, Barangay Captain Winifredo C. Maguan, Barangay Captain Rachel T. Rabor, Barangay Captain Jomar Piamonte, Barangay Captain Melicio M. Caniette Junior, Barangay Captain Moner T. Kalulong, Barangay Captain Darwin Pangolima, Barangay Captain Beltran O. Kawan, Barangay Kagawa Judy H. Silva, Executive Assistant Florde Lisa P. Sumbo, Municipal Disaster Officer Mark Christopher Quinho, and Ms. Eleanor V. Casidcid.
To the guests of Congressman Steve Solon from the Lone District of Sarangani, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business, I move for the consideration of the following House Bill on Third Reading, House Bill Number 9988 and 9989, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measures. So moved, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title.
House Bill 9988, an act establishing a regular campus of the Don Honorio Ventura State University in the city of San Fernando, Province of Pamanga, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 9989, an act strengthening the Don Honorio Ventura State University by renaming it as the Pamanga State University, expanding its curricular offerings and the composition of the governing board, and appropriating funds therefore. Rule call of members in consideration on Third Reading of House Bill Numbers 9988 and 9989. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atsharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkola, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistio, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalao, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Co Pilar, Kohuangko Jaime Eduardo Marc, Kohuangko Marc, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, De Gooc, De Lipe, Dalog, De Yanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, D. Faustino Ino, D. Faustino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ekleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Udella, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Marc, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Owaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padearnos, Padwano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Humaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulojio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbarea, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodoro, Teves, Tiyanko, Tiyeng, Tolentino, Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uy, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Virzosa, Vilya, Vilya Fuerte Luis Raymond, Vilya Fuerte Miguel Luis, Vilanueva, Vilyar, Vilyar Raza Suarez, Vilya Rica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christoffersen, Yap Advic, Yap Eric, U Divina Grace, U Jayzel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call in consideration on Third Reading of House Bill Numbers 9988 and 9989. Abunda, Akop, Adyong, Advinkola, Agarao, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Angara, Arbison, Aumentado, Barbers, Barzaga, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Biron, Bondok, Bongalon, Bosita, Bustos, Kahayon Uy, Chan, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Kohuangko Jaime Eduardo Marc, Kohuangko Marc, Koliantes, De Yanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, Dimaporo City Amina, Duavit, Duhali, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Garcia Albert, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin, Gasataya, Goles, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Guico, Gintu, Gutierrez, Hernandez, Horibata, Co Olga, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Madrona, Magsino, Mariano Hernandez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado Revilia, Morden, Nava, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Ongchuwan, Padwano, Panotes, Pimentel, Puno. Rehencha, Rodriguez Yulojio, Roman, Romero, Romualdo, Roque, Sagarbarea, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salvame, Santos, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Tambut, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ungab, Vargas, Velasco, Vilya Fuerte Luis Raymond, Vilya Fuerte Miguel Luis, Vilyar Raza Suarez, Violago, Zamora Maria Carmen.
With 205 members voting in affirmative, zero negative and zero abstentions, House Bill 9988 is hereby approved on third reading. With 204 members voting in affirmative, one in the negative and zero abstentions, House Bill 9989 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move for the approval on third reading, House Bill-
House Bill Number 10015, and request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and consequently call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and hereby call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 10015, An Act Declaring Certain Parcel of Land Occupied by Educational Institutions Within the Welfareville Property Located in Mandaluyong City as Exempt from Any Sale or Disposition, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 5200 Entitled "An Act Authorizing a Committee Composed of the Administrator of the Social Welfare Administration, the Auditor General, and the Secretary of the Department of General Services to Sell the Welfareville Property Located in the Municipality of Mandaluyong, Province of Rizal, and for Other Purposes." Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 10015. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buhaing, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofrance, Castrojean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Shua, Tsunggalaw, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Copilar, Co Wanko Jaime Eduardo Marc, Co Wanko Marc, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuarezma, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, Divinesha, Defensor, Delmar, Delosantos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kali, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalley, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ekleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fenteberia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo Chan, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Marc, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptley, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gintu, Julius, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga Ara, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magzino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuon, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Ieda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbarea, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulo, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suon, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves, Tianco, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uy, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Virzosa, Vilia, Vilia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Vilia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jazel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 10015. Abante, Abunda, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agarao, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Angara, Arbison, Aumentado, Barzaga, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Biron, Bondok, Bungalon, Bosita, Bustos, Kahayon Uy, Chan, Co Elizaldi, Coliantes, Dayanghirang, Daza, Dimaporo City Amina, Duavit, Duhalley, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Garcia Albert, Garcia Vincent, Garin, Gasataya, Goles, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Guico, Gintu, Hernandez, Horibata, Co Olga, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Madrona, Magzino, Mariano Hernandez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado Revilia, Morden, Nava, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Ongchuon, Panotes, Puno, Rodriguez Yulojo, Roman, Romero, Romualdo, Roque, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salvame, Santos, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Swansing Horacio, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Tambut, Tianco, Tieng, Tolentino, Tupas, Tutor, Ungab, Vargas, Velasco, Vilia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Vilia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villaraza Suarez, Violago, Zamora Maria Carmen.
With 212 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative and three abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill 10015 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under unfinished business, I move that we consider Committee Report Number 985 under Resolution of Both Houses Number 7, and ask the Secr... I withdraw my motion, Mr. Speaker. Uh, move to suspend.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw that motion, and now I move that we immediately transmit the, to the Senate, the House bills that we have just recently approved on third reading. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, Secretary General is hereby directed to forward the same to the Senate. Majority Leader.
Um, Speaker, I now move that we take up the calendar of unfinished business. So move.
There any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
Um, Mr. Speaker, I now move that we resume consideration of, um, Resolution of Both Houses of Congress Number 7, and for this purpose, may I move that the Secretary General be directed to read only the title of the resolution.
There's a motion to consider RB 87 of both houses, and I direct the Secretary General to please read the title of the said bill.
Resolution of Both Houses Number 7, a resolution of both Houses of Congress proposing amendments to certain economic provisions of the 1987 Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines, particularly on Articles 12, 14, and 16.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the HB Number 7 is that we're now in the period of interpolation, and to answer all interpolations by any of the members, may I move for the recognition of our distinguished representative from Cagayan de Oro City, the Honorable Rufus Rodriguez.
The distinguished gentleman from Cagayan de Oro is hereby recognized to sponsor RB 87.
And first to interpolate our distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, I move for the recognition of the gentleman from the 3rd District of Camarinosur, the Honorable Representative Gabriel Bordado Jr.
Congressman Bordado, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. A pleasant afternoon to you, my dear friend. Mr. Speaker, assuming for the sake of argument that everything will be okay, everything will be approved, that this RB 87 will also be okay at the Senate level, will there be a plebiscite?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, if the Senate secures 3/4 vote and approves by 3/4 vote RB 6 in the Senate, and we in our, the House of Representatives would approve by 3/4 vote RB 87, then clearly there's a meeting of the minds of the two chambers, and therefore this will be transmitted to the Komelec for a plebiscite to be conducted 60 days upon submission to the Komelec, up to 90 days, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sponsor, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will there be a campaign period for the plebiscite?
Yes, depends on the setting of the plebiscite day. Uh, there will be a information and debates and information drive on the two, on the economic amendments to the Constitution. Yes, there will be. Probably before the last day, before the, just like an election, it may be, all be allowed to have discussions until the penultimate day of the plebiscite.
Mr. Speaker, when will this be conducted? The plebiscite?
Uh, the, it will be now in the province of the Komelec to choose from 60 days to 90 days upon the submission of the two RBH to the Komelec.
So in other words, Mr. Speaker, the Commission on Elections will be handling this plebiscite?
The gentleman, Congressman Bordado is correct. It is the, it will now be the Komelec's jurisdiction to set the date and to conduct the plebiscite.
Mr. Speaker, how much will this? How much will be? How do you put that? How much will be the cost of conducting this plebiscite?
About the preliminary hearings of our committee on constitutional amendments, uh, what was mentioned is about 12 billion.
But the National Economic and Development Authority is saying that we will be spending close to 28 billion pesos.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, based on our hearings, the estimates were about, probably the Komelec itself was 12 billion, because this is just one question. Do you approve of the economic amendments to the Constitution? Very small piece of paper and, uh, very, very, uh, uh, very, very short questionnaire of the plebiscite.
Uh, anyway, Mr. Speaker, I don't know what is the real score here, but NEDA says it's 28 billion, and, uh, Mr. Speaker, according to the Department of Education, it has a backlog of 159 classrooms nationwide, costing more than 300 billion pesos. Mr. Speaker, don't you think it will be okay for us to allocate this 28 billion pesos for the classrooms?
Mr. Speaker, the expense for the plebiscite is not, and, it's not an expense, but an investment. It is an investment for the Filipino nation, because the crying need now is to have more foreign investments to be able to give more jobs. So the cost, Mr. Chairman, while true that we need classrooms, the Department of Education, the national government is trying to address this issue, but a primordial need of the times, Mr. Chairman, is to have constitutional change. According to a former Chief Justice, Renato Puno, we will never consider the expense, the cost of holding a plebiscite as an expense, but it is an investment towards the future of the Republic of the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, I don't agree with my friend, Congressman Rufus Rodriguez, that this is an investment for the future of the Philippines. I agree rather, Mr. Speaker, with the contention that the budget for cha-cha, or charter chains, should be better spent for education, health, housing, mass public transport, among other things, Mr. Speaker.
We note the observation of the gentleman from Camarinosur.
Mr. Speaker, we do not need to delve into the costly and time-consuming task of amending the Constitution in order to foster economic growth. Instead, we could continue introducing new legislations and amending existing ones to address pressing economic issues, particularly if urgency is our main concern. We should remember that no less than the President himself said that there is no need for charter chains in order to entice foreign investors to the country. He said that, I think, uh, a couple of years ago, during the start of his term.
Yes, and, uh, if you allow me to answer, the Honorable Bordado, at the Felconsa quite recent- the Honorable Bordado, at the Felconsa, quite recent, last February, at the Felconsa anniversary, the President said that we need more foreign investments in our country. And therefore, the need of the time, according to the President now, which has already, therefore, have changed his previous position, is that we need charter chains, but only and only on economic amendments. That is quoted, and I was present when the President said that just recently, during the Felconsa 70th anniversary.
But, Mr. Speaker, amending the Constitution is a massive responsibility that does not only affect our current predicament, but also sets the foundation of our future. Any action we make towards this step should be done with careful consideration and thorough preparation. Restoring our economy, revitalizing our economy is our most urgent priority. But opening the Constitution for amendments, Mr. Speaker, is a rather risky proposition. Our sparse resources, which are already spread too thin, would be better used addressing persistent economic problems at hand. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, my dear friend, Mr. Sponsor.
Thank you, my dear colleague. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, next to interpolate the distinguished sponsor is the lady from Partilist Act Teacher Representative, the Honorable Franz Castro. I ask for her recognition.
Congressman Franz Castro, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So would the sponsor yield to some clarification, Mr. Chair?
Definitely to the, I was about to say the gentle lady, but ladies are always gentle. Gentlemen are necessarily gentle, so we call them gentlemen. But the lady, Franz Castro, I am very glad to be able to answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. So while we are discussing the RBH-7, Mr. Chair, in the Committee of the Whole, if I heard it right, twice or thrice, you have said that in a proper time you will amend the RBH-7. And you have cited, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, the provision in the RBH-2 during the time of Speaker Sani Belmonte. Are you serious on that? On the proper time, you will amend the RBH-7 that we have passed in the Committee of the Whole?
I have always believed that to open our country, we should have more articles to be amended. However, you know, in this particular situation, we have to be very, very realistic and practical. If we approve six or seven provisions, it will not be what the Senate is now hearing. Only three. And to be able to make sure that for the first time in the history of our country, after 37 years of the Constitution being unamended, there is now the light at the end of the tunnel, that there is also a congruence between both houses that our Senate has already started deliberations on three. To be able to assure that there will be a true and therefore, an approval of the amendments, I am now saying that I agree with three provisions of the Constitution.
Okay. So since we are discussing this RBH-7 as if it is a bill or simple resolution being discussed in the Committee of the Whole, not as a constituent assembly or a constituent convention, neither a PI. So that means that during the period of bicameral committee, is it possible that the bill or the House resolution will be altered and putting some amendments? Because, Mr. Speaker, we have that experience, right? If the sponsor would agree with me, there are bills or resolutions agreed, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, on a third and final reading. But there is a third Congress, what we call the bicameral committee, wherein most, meron kasi, kumbaga, malaki 'yung mga significant na changes as regards to the amendments in the House resolution or bill. So would it be possible na magkakaroon din ng amendments later? So if there come a time na nagkaroon ng bicameral committee between the House and the Senate, may possibility po ba na magkaroon ng amendments doon sa BICAM?
I would like to assure our distinguished colleague that there will be no chance for a bicameral conference committee because our RBH-7 is identical to RBH-6. So there is no chance. Those who conjure fears that there may be some political amendments will really be unfounded. Because it's very clear, in the Senate, three articles, 12, 14, and 16, the same here in the House of Representatives. There is no chance that there be any change to what we will approve here and what will be expectantly to be approved in the Senate.
Mr. Speaker, with due respect, so there is a big difference as regards to the, on the term on like joint, voting jointly and voting separately. Here in RBH-7 that we have, ano, no, that we have approved, so sinasabi natin dito, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that the Congress will vote jointly.
Yes.
Pero sa Senate po ang version nila, voting separately. So that would be different, and a big different.
You are talking about procedure, distinguished colleague. Now in the procedure, while hours here, we went into a Committee of the Whole House that was not yet constituent assembly. Now, we are now constituent assembly. In other words, the procedure will be the same. They have three-fours vote in the Senate and three-fours votes here, which will comply with Article 17, Section 1, Paragraph 1. Three-fours of all these members, it does not require a joint session.
Okay, so in our resolution on both houses, so we have said here, so what are we talking about? Congress, which is composed of the House of Representatives and the Senate, Mr. Speaker.
That's correct, Mr. Speaker.
So, so yun nga po, diba? If this is a constituent assembly, the House of Representatives and the Senate should convene jointly and vote separately. Tama po ba yon?
Mr. Speaker, that was the 1973 Constitution and the 87, 73. In the 87 Constitution, there is no statement about joint hearing in joint session of Congress assembled. It is the 73. So if you have constitutional construction, Mr. Speaker, it means that that requirement to have a joint assembly in joint session assembled not already stated in the 1987 Constitution in constitutional construction that has been set aside. So there is no more need for a joint session. That is why, in this particular case, the Senate and the House is having its own contemporaneous construction. There in the Senate, they are now doing it at the subcommittee level on into a process of getting three-fours vote of the Senate. They have already started it. If they did not believe in a non-joint session, then they would have called for us together. There will be no more committees. Go direct to a joint constituent assembly. The same construction we have done in the House because we went through the Committee of the Whole and now we are here on a plenary. And so therefore, this constitutional, contemporary construction of both houses lends credit to the fact that the both Houses of Congress have made the determination that we are following Section 1, Paragraph 1 of Article 17.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and our distinguished sponsor. Okay, just for the record lang, Mr. Speaker, no, as later on, if there would be some amendments, I just would like to put this on record. You had the answer, Mr. Speaker, of our distinguished sponsor. So would there be a political amendments like term extension, term limits, et cetera?
Nothing of that sort whatsoever, Mr. Speaker. The four corners of our resolution and the committee report, 985, is definite, specific, and clear. Only three, three economic amendments. So that will never happen that there will be political amendments. We assure our distinguished colleague.
Okay, I just would like to put that on record because there would be BICAM and there would be some discussions further. How about the substantial amendments on Bill of Rights, Safeguards of Martial Law, the ban of nuclear foreign military bases, and on the, yeah, on those? Bill of Rights, Safeguards of Martial Law, and the nuclear and foreign bases? So pwede po ba yan na maaring maamend or mabago during the BICAM?
Absolutely, nan, Mr. Speaker, on the subject matters that was stated by my distinguished colleague. Only three, Article 12, 14, and 16 economic provisions by putting there unless otherwise provided by law.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, for that assurance. Dahil alam niyo po, talagang marami rin tayo naging mga karanasan po, no, na naging malaki 'yung naging pagbabago when there is already, when the bill or House resolution is already in the BICAM, Mr. Speaker. Well, next question, Mr. Speaker, 'yung tungkol doon sa, on the, I'm just curious about our claims in the West Philippine Sea. So if there would be a opening up of our natural, of our, ano, no, opening up of our public utilities and to other aspects of economy, so what would be its effect to our claim in the West Philippines? If there is?
There will be no effect as far as the economic provisions are concerned. None whatsoever. Our claim continues. We have won in the Arbitral Tribunal of July 12, 2016, stating that the Chinese position of the nine-dash line has no basis in international law, specifically the United Nations Convention of the Law of the Seas.
Okay, so there is no connection whatsoever?
None whatsoever. Just economic provisions.
Okay, so suppose this RBH-7 would be approved. So ibig sabihin, Mr. Speaker, 'yung public utilities natin ay maibubukas na po, no, sa ating, sa foreign ownership. So that includes water, 'yung ating electricity, transportation, telecoms, et cetera. So as of now, ang condition po natin on our power, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, as regards to the transmission and distribution, it is still in the hands of Filipino majority, right?
Yes, that is correct. 60/40.
Yes, kung maibubukas po ito, halimbawa, Mr. Speaker, when this would be approved, so ibig sabihin po 'yung transmission and the distribution will be open to the foreigner.
That is correct. However, what we approve now, if we approve it, is a provision that it will be unless otherwise provided by law. Congress will now determine what will be the percentages in the opening up of our industries, public utilities. At the same time, like what the United States and United Kingdom has done, they have a Foreign Investments Act and National Security Act. In the U.S., 2019; in U.K., 2022, there will be screening of investors to our country. And therefore, countries in conflict with our country may be not allowed to invest because there is a conflict. And that is precisely what the U.S. and U.K. have done, that there are laws to screen those who will invest in their respective jurisdictions.
But, Mr. Speaker, there would be a possibility. Kasi nga, diba, iopen na natin, not only iopen natin 'yung transmission and the distribution to foreign entity. So as of now, the condition is 40%, and our national grid, 40% for Chinese, for China, and then 60% for the Filipino. And sinasabi niyo po, no, it would be dependent on the legislation or depend...
That's correct. To put some safeguards on the investments here in the country, that's correct.
Siguro, Mr. Chair, in the future, kung di na rin tayo siguro 'yung nasa Congress or nasa Senate, maaring ibukas na yan ng 100%. Kasi, sabi natin, gusto natin talagang full-open 'yung mga public utilities natin. So would there be a possibility po na even if not, if it is not China or if it is U.S.? Kasi, ito, nabalitaan natin, magiinvest po 'yung U.S. dito, no?
One billion.
One, one billion. So if it is not China, if it is other countries, would it be, would it be possible, Mr. Speaker, because of the word "unless otherwise provided by law"?
In the realm of possibilities, yes. It can be 100%, 99%. However, this will be lodged in Congress to decide what are the safeguards, how much will be the investment ratio, and what countries, what will be given to our NEDA, to our Executive Department, the standards to be able to protect national security.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker and distinguished sponsor for that explanation. Next question, as regards to our, the flow of our FDI. So medyo na natigil, ano, 'yung pagkukwisten ko to NEDA about the, how much pa ba 'yung kailangan nating iopen in our economy? Since lahat na iopen na, no? Like for example, 'yung mga manufacturing, 'yung mining, so kahit naman 'yung, ano, no, Like, for example, 'yung mga manufacturing, yung mining, so kahit naman 'yung, ano na, 'yung sa part ng eco-zone, so kahit, ano na rin siya, no? Marami na rin tayong ibinibigay na mga concessions, et cetera. So how much percent pa po ba sa economy, economy natin ang i-open? So ilang percent pa po ba?
That is precisely what, in the ultimate wisdom of the two Houses-Chambers of Congress, will decide. It will be subjected. Any bill regarding opening of investments after we approve this amendment will be subject to the positions of NEDA, DTI, the National Security Council, the Department of Foreign Affairs. So everybody will be heard. The, just the point is that there is flexibility, because it will not be carved in stone like what we have now. It is in the Constitution, and the Constitution, until amended, is the fundamental law. And that is what we are trying to lift, so that Congress will be able to hear all stakeholders and then be able to decide what will be the best foreign investment law on certain industries.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I'm asking of the percentage of our economy, that this is still closed.
Precisely.
So if you are going to open na 'yung lahat ng utilities, 'yung education institutions natin,
Advertising.
Advertising. So ilang percent pa po 'yung natitirang not open to foreign investment?
We do not have any agency, those particular figures. And the best way to have that is when we amend this constitution and we will go investment by investment in every field, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So dun po sa research natin, no, at least six percent na lang po. Six point two percent na lang 'yung hindi open for foreign investment po doon sa ating, ano na, doon sa ating study. So, but anyway, dun po sa mga pag-aaral, like why foreign investors do not go to the Philippines? There are, diba, may mga study po about the, number one, yung cost of electricity, the cost of internet, and then our policy, economic policy, and then yung, ano, yung mga permitting, both for LGU and national, and then yung pung traffic, corruption, et cetera. So wala po ba tayong, ano, wala po ba tayong titignan na magiging, ito 'yung nagiging cause, why 'yung ating mga supposedly foreign direct investment na pupunta rito sa ating, sa ating bansa, yun po 'yung mga, yun po 'yung nagiging dahilan? So are we not going to scrutinize then, or have a study, survey, about those cited in the survey, why the, why our foreign investments, or why foreign investments do not want to go to the Philippines?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In my sponsorship speech, I said that opening our country through constitutional amendment is not the panacea to all the problems that we face. In fact, we are constantly trying to solve these problems. Problems of high electricity cost, problems of poverty, problems of a higher, higher cost of doing business. But precisely, this will start, the constitutional amendment opens the key. And together with a set of program to be able to solve these perennial problems, then we will be able to solve the problems of lack of foreign investments to give more job opportunities to our people, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, thank you for the answer. So wala po tayong, ano na, gagawing later on na study or survey, pag-aaral, tungkol doon sa mga sinasabi ng mga investors natin.
We will continue.
Kasi wala po tayong, ano na, wala po tayong, dun po sa mga survey and study, hindi naman po lumalabas doon 'yung charter change.
Yes, but precisely, there is no mention of the charter change, because there's no charter change. We are really, you know, being cornered in a constitutional provision that limits foreign investments. So they're not factored in. But if we open them, then precisely then we are, it's possible that you'll be able to lower electricity cost by allowing foreign investments to come to generation, transmission, and distribution. So we are not going to stop our studies and surveys through our different agencies on the other issues facing us. We will continue. However, what I'm saying is that now we have a more open economy because we have lifted these provisions that are carved in our constitution.
Okay, so, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, since nineteen seventies po, open na po 'yung ating mga, mga investment, no, FDIs natin. And in fact, the Philippines has steadily opened up for foreign investment since the Marcos time in nineteen seventies. The annual direct investment inflows are negative, negative four point one dollar, a million dollars in nineteen seventy, and twenty-two million in nineteen seventy-one dollars. And then, when we welcome the economic policies under the Marcos, Marcos martial law, 'yung foreign capital increased its investment after nineteen seventy-two po, by five-fold. Naging one hundred thirty-one million dollars po 'yung ating mga FDI inflows, no? And tenfold in nineteen seventy-seven, so during the time, nineteen seventy-seven, we have two hundred ten million U.S. dollars. So kung titignan po natin 'yung magnitude ng FDI inflows increase in nineteen nineties, especially in the twenty-ten, to reach to ten point five billion in twenty-twenty-one. They also grew measured as share of gross domestic product and increased five-fold from seven point five of the GDP in the early nineteen seventies to two point six in the last five years. So kung titignan po natin mula panahon ng martial law, tumataas naman po 'yung mga investment natin, dahil ang claim po talaga natin, nabukas naman 'yung ating investment. Pero, did it translate to the condition on the poverty level, employment level of the Filipinos po? So hanggang ngayon po kasi, parang lalo tayong naghihirap, at saka yung ating employment rate, unemployment rate ay tumataas. So tingin niyo po ba, itong pagbubukas natin, itong sinasabi natin na tatlong provision na ito ay makakapagpaalwan sa buhay ng ating mga kapwa Pilipino po, Mr. Speaker?
We firmly believe, Mr. Speaker, that we have here, in my sponsorship speech, we have the inflows of inward foreign direct investments, and I'm having the two thousand ten, fourteen, and twenty-two. Although, yes, we have increased from nine, from two thousand ten, it's one, one point two billion. In two thousand fourteen, it was five billion. Twenty-twenty-two, it is nine billion. However, we are left behind by our other Asian neighbors. While we were getting in twenty-twenty-two, just one and a half years ago, while we were getting nine point three six six billion, Indonesia was getting twenty-two billion. Malaysia was getting seventeen billion. Singapore, hundred forty-one billion. Philippines, nine point three billion. And so therefore, we are saying that while we are indeed increasing, these are incremental increases. We want an increase that will approximate, there you go, we want the one that will approximate the other countries, like Singapore, Thailand, and Malaysia, and Vietnam. And that is why we are saying that this is really the needs of the times. Also, Mr. Speaker, the NEDA estimates that lifting the foreign equity restrictions on public utilities, advertising, and education could, on average, increase the gross, the real gross domestic product GDP by forty to eighty billion, or an additional point, zero point two, two point, two, zero point four percentage points to the real GDP growth. In other words, forty to eighty billion will come in to the Philippines in real gross domestic product. Secondly, according to NEDA, this will generate, and it is the most important thing for all of us Filipinos, opening our country to lifting the foreign equity restrictions in public utilities, education, and advertising. It will generate additional about forty thousand to hundred thirty thousand jobs annually. Can you imagine that? Forty thousand to hundred thirty thousand jobs annually. So therefore, we can say that indeed, even the NEDA is, of course, supporting this, as stated by Director General Arsenio Balisakan, because of the need to have more foreign investments, more job opportunities, and more income to the national government in terms of taxes.
Well, pinakita niyo po kanina 'yung, ano na, 'yung data, Mr. Speaker, as regards to the, 'yung FDI inflow po,
Yes.
Nung ating mga kapitbahay,
Yes.
Kalapit bansa. So ang ibibang sabihin nito ay, 'yung pagkukumpara ba ng FDI inflows ng ibat-ibang mga bansa? So halimbawa, kung tayo, so does it mean na nagbunga ito ng hindi pag-unlad sa atin, at pag-unlad naman ng mga mamamayan sa ibang, sa ibang mga bansa? Kasi, kung ikukumpara po natin, Mr. Speaker, as regard doon sa situation. So kagaya nga na sinasabi ko, hindi lang 'yung FDI inflows ang magiging sukatan. So bakit ba dumarami 'yung pupunta sa Vietnam, dumarami 'yung pupunta sa, even in Cambodia? Because of other things, not, not the provision on our economic, ano, cha-cha. So kagaya ng, binanggit ko kanina, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, 'yung problem nila on, on the cost of electricity, the cost of internet, kahit naman po sa cost of internet, ah, Mr. Speaker, as compared doon sa mga ibang mga bansa, tayo 'yung pinakamahal. Kukumpere natin niya sa Vietnam, Malaysia, Indonesia, and even Cambodia, tayo po 'yung pinakamahal. Kayo po 'yung sinasabi natin, kung susukatin lang natin 'yan sa, sa inflows ng mga FDI, so hindi ito 'yung sukatan para masabi natin na umuunlad 'yung ating, ano na, 'yung ating mga mamamayan. So, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
What we can say, Mr. Speaker, is that all these countries which have higher foreign investment laws, they have no constitutional provision prohibiting and limiting foreign investments. So they are open. That's why in the Competitiveness FDI Restrictiveness Index, coming from the OECD, it is very clear that the Philippines ranks eighty-second out of eighty-four economies in terms of restrictiveness or being closed. So we are, you know, eighty-four countries economies, and the Philippines is eighty-second restrictive index. So we are saying that while other issues of high electricity, high cost of internet use, once again, we will emphasize that the problem also, which we want to address, is the constitutional side, why foreign investments are not coming to the Philippines. But we have to solve the other problems, and that will be precisely what the government is always doing, together with his agencies and departments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. As regards to the manufacturing, so eto po ay, ano na 'yan, open na po talaga.
Manufacturing has always been open.
Pero bakit po matumal 'yung pagpunta ng mga investors dito sa manufacturing? And even in mining? Okay, so ano po ba, yung sinasabi ng mga investors natin, bakit ganon?
Well, there are certain industries.
Open na 'yan eh, 'yung ating mga manufacturing, yung,
Yeah, there will always be.
And even the retail, diba? So kahit saan ka man pumunta dito, may mga foreign investors na, Korea, Thai, Vietnam, sa mga, ano natin, ano, sa mga commercial areas natin. So kulang pa po ba itong mga, ano na, 'to, mga batas na 'yan na nagpo-provide ng pag-o openness ng ating economy doon sa mga mahalagang industry po, Mr. Speaker?
There are industries that are already open, and they are not in the constitutional list. However, precisely, Mr. Chairman, we are trying to solve the issues of electricity, of, of high cost, but at the same time, we should go back again to the constitutional provision to have more investments in public utilities, education, and media. And that is why we are saying that this does not solve all the entire problems that we have, but it can lead to the start of a new era where government, where foreign investments will be coming to the Philippines.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. I will go now to education, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. On our, on our committee report, so Section Four on Basic Educational Institutions Other Than Those Established, so gusto ko lang to put on record 'yung tungkol doon sa pag-o open up natin, doon sa mga educational institution. Is it from elementary, basic education, elementary, high school, senior, tertiary level, hanggang doon sa kung may vocational or TIVET, et cetera, on that level po, 'yung pagbubukas natin nung, nung, eto na, nung Section, Section Four on Article Fourteen, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, on the point of education, we'd like the speaker to recognize the Honorable Roman Romolo, our chairperson of the Committee on Basic Education, to be able to answer, as one of the sponsors, to answer this very particular issue on education.
Congressman Roman Romolo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Honorable Rufus Chairman Rufus Rodriguez. To the query of the lady from the act party list, it is clear from the inclusion of the word "basic" in the amendment that it will, the liberalization will actually apply only to the higher education institutions. Basic education shall remain with Filipino citizens and with the corporation sixty-forty owned by Filipinos.
Okay.
And controlled.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Kasi meron pong dalawang, ano dito, no, dalawang, kumbaga nagbabanggaan na provision, like, for example, control and administration on educational institution as regard doon sa, ano na, kasi merong unless otherwise provided by law, as regards to the ownership. Okay, so how can you, how can we harmonize that, Mr. Speaker?
Actually, Congresswoman Castro, the current constitution, the first sentence in Article Fourteen, Section Two, I mean, Section Fourteen, Paragraph Two, provides education institutions, and that is why everything flowed from there. If you will note, the proposed amendment under this, under this House, Joint House Resolution, it says the first sentence is "basic," and then even "control," even "ownership," and even the increase of Filipino ownership was all put together in one paragraph to emphasize that the intention is for all these sentences, all these prohibitions, all these powers to only apply to basic education. So if you will read, "Basic institutions shall have that sixty-forty and owned by Filipino citizens." And "Control and administration shall be with Filipino citizens." And if there will be any increase, increase in percentages of ownership, that will also be of that will also be vested in, for Filipinos in basic education only.
Yes, that's precisely bakit niyo po nilagay 'yung unless otherwise provided by law. Kung talagang, kung imi-maintain po natin, halimbawa, doon sa basic education, that it is sixty to forty percentage in favor of the Filipino, ano itong magiging, ano no, itong nakakalito kasi to unless otherwise provided by law, kasi there is still a room, no, for changes later on, di ba? Sa sixty, forty?
Yes, but let me assure the lady from Act Party List that the sole intention of the authors of this particular provision is simple, that basic education shall remain with Filipino citizens or with a corporation sixty-forty owned by Filipinos. Control and administration shall remain with Filipino citizens and for basic educations, and the increase, if ever, in equity participation in basic education for Filipinos will also be in basic education. If there is some confusion brought about by the wording, we will take note of that. But let me assure the lady from Act Party List, the intention of the authors is basic education remains with Filipino citizens, control and administration remains with Filipino citizens, and if there will be any increase in participation for Filipino citizens, that will also only apply in basic education. That is the intention. And if there's any confusion by the way it is drafted, this exchange between myself and the lady from the Act Party List should clarify that issue, that the intention is basic education remains with Filipino citizens or corporations controlled by Philippine citizens.
Okay, so, are you willing to delete itong unless otherwise provided by law? Kasi, there would be a room further, di ba? In aid of legislation, na maiba 'yan. Although we are discussing, ano, na malinaw na sinasabi ninyo, that basic education is in control of the Filipino citizen pa rin. Pero, the inclusion of this unless otherwise provided by law will provide a room for any legislation in the future, Mr. Speaker?
Hopefully, the exchange between the lady from Act Party List and myself will clarify this issue and under statutory construction. If there is any confusion as to the reading of any provision, then we can take a look at the deliberations and debates. And once they look at these deliberation and debates, it will be very clear to any person, any individual, including the Supreme Court or any court, that the intention of the authors on this particular provision is that it remain with Filipino citizens.
Yes, okay. But of course, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
But we note the concerns of the lady from Act Party List, and we value always the opinion of the lady from Act Party List, and we will note, take note of that. And I'm sure even the authors are already thinking about exactly if rereading this, if this will really create any confusion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. So, so ibig sabihin po, Mr. Speaker, 'yung tertiary level o 'yung higher educational institution will be open for hundred percent or whatever percent na ownership sa foreigner, including the control and administration of educational institution. Am I, that, ano no, that would be the implication of this, di ba? Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the amendment.
That is correct.
Ang ibig sabihin, 'yung higher education, open.
That is correct, subject of course to laws that we have in the, in our country now, like example, sa CHED po, hindi naman, CHED will have to approve the programs that will be taught or introduced by any higher education institutions. In fact, as Justice Puno, when he was one of our resource persons here, if you recall, Honorable Castro, in fact, the suggestion, one suggestion of Honorable Justice Puno then was that if we just delete all these provisions in the constitution, then by law, that will still be open to Congress to be able to either limit it, subject to the environment, subject to experience, subject to how things will turn out. But theoretically, you are correct, but it is of course subject to Philippine law, rules and regulations.
Yes, oh, eto lang, gusto ko lang linawin din po. So, sinasabi niyo po na, ano no, kahit na po, kahit na po sinasabi ni Justice Puno, naburahin 'yan, ayun, yun ang tanong ko, basic. So, 'yung higher education, i-open na po natin 'yan sa ownership, control and administration ng foreigner, hundred percent to the maximum?
Yes, and let me put in the records.
Uh, include that po'ta.
Again, let me, let me reply first, Honorable Castro. In fact, if you recall, during the Committee of the Whole, we discussed the Constitutional Commission's deliberations at that time. And in fact, it was, it was noted here and told to us by one of the resource persons that Commissioner Gaskon was asked for the reason for why we have this constitutional equity restriction. And if you recall, the reply then was that for values. But at that time, the environment at that time was, there was no social media, there was no cable TV, there were no cell phones. And right now, the environment is far different. When you enter college or HEI, you're eighteen years old. You're already an adult and with a solid foundation that we give in basic education, we know that all those reasons for the inclusion before will no longer exist.
Okay, with that argument, Mr. Speaker, mas lalo na patitibay po no, 'yung ating paniniwala na hindi naman kailangan na i-open natin ito hundred percent. Kasi with the, meron na tayong mga distance learning, di ba? Or pwede tayong, meron nga tayong trans-international na law, na hindi pa natin, sabi nga ng ating resource person, na hindi pa natin to na i-aapply, kasi pandemic ito na ano. So, with 'yung reason na yun, dahil meron na tayong social media, meron na tayong mga, like 'yung mga applications, et cetera, so the more na, hindi naman kailangan na i-open hundred percent 'yung operations, control, and ownership doon sa higher education. So, yun po.
Yes.
And another question, kapag i-open natin sa foreigner, 'yung higher education, does it include the land ownership? Kasi yun, yun eh, di ba? 'Yung control and, ano no, 'yung control ng mga educational institution natin. So, ibig sabihin nun, it is a subtle, ano na, naibibigay na natin sa foreigner, 'yung lupa, di ba? Kung mag-o-open tayo ng hundred percent na ownership.
Honorable Castro, I am sure you are well aware that there is a specific constitutional provision on land ownership. That is not being discussed here. And even if we open up the higher education institutions to ownership, that constitutional restriction remains. So, the land is not included within this discussion. What is included here is simply the ownership of the school, the higher education institution. And I'm very happy, Honorable Castro, that you mention 'yung mga online, online HEI programs already. In fact, ang dami 'yan. In fact, recently, nabasa ko, Harvard, in fact, is giving free online classes. And that is one of the reasons why, the very reason why we had the restriction is no longer valid. Because with the coming of social media, with the coming of Wi-Fi, we have actually, we are already open to the world. The influences that constitutional framers sought to prevent then, because there was no Wi-Fi at that time, no longer exist now, because we have Wi-Fi. The influences are all over. Pangatlo, no, third, Honorable Castro, matagal na tayong magkasama. In fact, we have been fighting for our teachers. And we both know the truth, that we need better quality universities and colleges in the country. We need them because our teacher education program, we have not been able to pass in our own LET examinations more than fifty percent of the LET takers for basic education or secondary education from the years twenty, twelve to today. So, we really need to upgrade. We need quality in our teacher degree programs. We need quality in our universities. Competition will bring that. Competition will bring quality efficiency. And just to mention, you mentioned kasi po, 'yung, ano, 'yung transnational, yes, 'yung higher education. But again, to put it in the proper perspective, if you recall, Dean Abad from Adamson University, when I asked about that query on this particular law, it is not really, it is really, it is merely partnerships. It is really just opening a branch office. It is not really, at the end of the day, the full service that we want to promote quality in our schools. And Dean Abad herself mentioned that, what we have here are really just branches. It is really partners. So, ownership is not really in the hands of the foreign institution. But just to put it on record, as of now, we already have twenty-six foreign schools with foreign partners already. But again, this is not what we contemplate. What we contemplate is really that the university or the college itself comes in, takes full control, and they are the ones that are able to direct the curriculum that they want to introduce in the Philippines.
Well, ang problema ang sinasolve natin, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, if I remember it right, dun sa ilang mga sponsor na nagsalita, and even the pro-chacha colleagues, ang sinasabi natin, 'yung gusto nating ma-address eh, 'yung education crisis, 'yung learning crisis. At sinasabi natin, ito 'yung result ng pisa, ito 'yung ganito. So, kundi naman, hindi kasama dito 'yung basic, no? So, minention nung ating mga ilang mga resource person about the problem of our education, di ba? 'Yung access, 'yan, 'yung recommendation ng EdCom II. Ako, naniniwala ako talaga dun sa majority, nung mga findings, na yun 'yung dapat na i-address. Hindi 'yung ownership. And in fact, 'yung sinasabi natin sa tertiary level, hindi naman nahuhuli 'yung ating mga universities, 'yung mga top universities natin, dun sa mga top universities ng other school.
I fully agree.
Hindi po ba, kung graduate ka ba ng Harvard, graduate ka ng Yale, graduate ka ng SNU, graduate ka ng ganito, ay magaling ka na at makakatulong ka na sa taong bayan at magagawa mo ng apaunlarin 'yung buhay ng taong bayan? So, hindi pa rin, yun 'yung sasagot sa problema natin sa edukasyon, Mr. Speaker. Mauusay tayo sa higher education. Ang dami nating magaling na school na competitive, na hindi naman kailangan nating gawin 'yung pag-o-open nito ng ownership, administration, and control ng foreigners.
First of all, for the lady from Act Party List, we both agree, and I think all the members will agree, that we have full faith, first of all, in the talent of Filipinos. Wala po tayong issue dyan. Ang gusto lang po natin ay siguraduhin na mas marami silang pagkakataon na 'yung maharness po nila 'yung potential nila. Tama po kayo, binanggit niyo 'yung EdCom II Year One Report, and that is correct. Marami po dun findings iba-iba. Pero let us not forget that EdCom II, in fact, identified twenty-eight priority areas. And one of the twenty-eight priority areas would be the internationalization of higher education institutions. The reason why the first year report tackled first the twenty-three points, not including yet HEI's, internationalization of HEI's, is because the view then of EdCom II was 'yung unang mga issue ay mas madali, in the sense, mas low-hanging fruits. Bakit? Wala namang po dun constitutional prohibition. Unlike when you talk about, one of the twenty-eight is the internationalization of HEI's, we all knew from the very beginning, there was a constitutional barrier. So, it is not easily within the low-hanging fruits. So, natakil muna 'yung mga, natakil muna 'yung mga walang constitutional barriers. Pangalawa, even if you take a look at the EdCom II Year One Report, and it was very glaring po doon, one of the improvements that we must do is with respect to our teacher education programs. Hindi ba po, mali nga ako kanina, from 2009 to today, hindi ba, maliwanag po dun 'yung average passing rate ng LET takers natin ay sa primary and sa secondary, less than fifty percent pass the LET on average.
Wait.
Uh, hindi pa po yun, hindi pa po yun. Meron po tayo more or less mga, almost two hundred HEI institutions operating since 2012 that in fact have not produced any passers in our LET exams. And teacher, the teacher is the most important ingredient for education. Yun namang po talaga ang pinaka-importante. Sabi nga po natin, di ba?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
A happy teacher is really equivalent to quality education. Sinasabi rin po natin, marami tayong magagaling. Wala ho tayong issue. Marami tayong magagaling na HEI's. Ang sinasabi lang natin, mas maganda pa kung magdagdag tayo, unang-una competition will be able to promote quality and excellence. But then again po, no, we have a lot of HEI's that are doing so well, but what is wrong with us even providing our learners more opportunities?
Yes, so sa sinasabi natin, Mr. Speaker, so hindi naman ang cost doon ay 'yung ownership o 'yung control, 'yung administration. So, kung meron ba mga foreigner dito, so tingin niyo ba, hundred percent na 'yung passing sa LET? Hundred percent na 'yung magiging passing sa medicine or any courses? So, yun lang po 'yung sinasabi ko, Mr. Speaker, nadetermine natin 'yung problema ng, ay 'yung mga educational system natin, especially in the tertiary level, nadetermine natin. Pero hindi, hindi 'yung ownership or control and administration ang problema doon. Ang problema po ay 'yung system. Kahit na naman po mag-internationalization tayo, na sinasabi sa EdCom, ano po ba 'yung internationalization? Does it include ownership and control and administration of our HEI's? Yung po ba ang ibig sabihin ng EdCom on internationalization?
First po, no, para maliwanag, it is included in the twenty-eight priority areas that was released by EdCom II Year One pa lang. Pero ngayon pa lang siya maumpisan i-discuss, simply because may constitutional barrier nga po eh. That is why that was an issue that was, that could not, hindi siya low-hanging fruit. Now, if you will ask me, kasama ba po yun? I'm sure it is an open menu kung ano 'yung pwede pag-usapan. But of course, it will be discussed within the limits of our laws, most especially the constitution. So, right now, kapag uusapan po yun, definitely, mahirapan po talaga 'yung discussion about that if the constitution is closed, because, or limited or restricted, because EdCom II can only work within the parameters that it is given. But the fact that it was placed in the twenty-eight key priority areas, I think is a signal that there is really some concern. Tama po kayo, baka naman hindi naman yun, hanggang dun ang patungo. Pero hindi rin po natin malalaman, kasi nga sa ngayon, may equity restrictions tayo, and EdCom II cannot go beyond that. If I, and again, Honorable Castro, if I had misunderstood you earlier, alam ko naman 'yung sinasabi po ninyo, it's the system that must be fixed. And that is what we are, we all are in agreement with that. But we all should, we should also agree that there are many and various ways that we can improve the system. And one such way is to improve our teacher education program. And one way of improving that, again, is through competition. And once we have more quality educational universities that may provide quality education.
Well, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Speaker. Alam niyo po, marami na rin tayong mga magagaling na mga teachers ang nagpupunta. Hindi lang sa US, kahit na dito lang, sa ating, ano no, sa ating mga neighbor countries because of salary. So, yun, yun din 'yung dahilan. Kung bakit, ano no, kung bakit nagiging, ano no, nagiging problematic tayo doon sa mga magagaling na teachers sana, or even, siguro, sa mga newly graduate na makikita nila 'yung ating salary na ganito, na hindi talaga enticing sa ating mga magagaling na mga newly graduate. And even, 'yung mga magagaling na ating mga teachers, nagpupunta na rin. So, 'yan din 'yung dapat nating pag-uulan ng pansin. Although meron na rin tayong ginagawa, pero hindi rin, 'yan yun, hindi rin 'yan 'yung sasabihin natin na kailangan nating hundred percent ownership, 'yung ating, ano no? Tama kayo, system, 'yung ating, 'yung ating policy doon sa ating education, yun po 'yung dapat na palitan, yun po 'yung dapat na gawin dahil naniniwala pa rin talaga ako eh, na best education pa rin ang makukuha natin sa Pilipinas. Kahit na sabihin natin na magagaling, kasi applicable sa kanila yun eh. Iba 'yung sa atin, di ba? 'Yung dapat na maituro dito sa atin, sa ating mga kabataan eh, 'yung concepts, skills na pakikinabangan natin at hindi ito 'yung pakikinabangan ng ibang bansa. So, 'yun lang po 'yung ating, ano, no? Masasabi doon na dapat ang edukasyon natin ay huwag namang ituring na parang goods, di ba? Na for sale, lalong-lalo na sa higher education. At it's good nga, nalino ninyo na hindi kasama 'yung basic education dito, Mr. Speaker.
Yes. And Honorable Castro, we agree with you, ano? In fact, I've always stated that with the issue of education, this is not, from my point of view, it is not really, it is not about investment. It is not a commodity or a good. It is simply, what we want is to ensure for that our number-one asset, 'yung potential po talaga ng Filipino ay ma-unleash natin. Again po, hindi lang sa ating bansa, pero kung kaya natin globally, because that is how good the Filipinos are. And that is why we want to ensure quality education. We are not saying that we don't have enough good teachers. Marami rin po tayo. But you must remember, napakarami rin po nating Pilipino. Kung maalala po ninyo, ang dami rin naka-enroll sa ating mga paaralan. In fact, tayo nga sa basic education. We are trying to free up our teachers from the admin work. Because sobra talaga silang, sobrang dami ng trabaho. And in colleges and universities, you will hear the same thing. Talagang ang dami rin pong pumapasok na sa ating colleges and universities. We need to provide, to ensure that 'yung, we are able to unleash the full potential of the Filipino. And that we can do if we have quality universities, more quality universities and colleges.
Yes. Thank you po, Mr. Speaker. I think I'm running out of time. So, dun ko na po tinatapos 'yung interpolation natin. So, naniniwala din talaga po ako, ang itong, 'yung itong kinatawan na ito, na hindi CHACHA, hindi 'yung economic CHACHA ang sagot doon sa mga pressing problem natin sa ating ekonomiya at sa ating, ano, no? Sa ating education, or even advertising. Dahil kung tama lang po 'yung mga economic policies natin, 'yung mga educational policies natin ay, we are on the right, ano, no? Right direction. So, 'yun po, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Distinguished Sponsor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Congresswoman Castro. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend, in the meantime, consideration of RB 87. So...
There is a motion to suspend deliberation of RB 87. Any objection there being done? Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
We move that we recognize Representative Brosas.
Congresswoman Arlene Brosas, what is your pleasure?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker. I have a personal and collective privilege on the impending strike in FCF Manufacturing Corporation.
Okay. You have 10 minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise today on a matter of personal and collective privilege to bring to your attention the successful strike vote conducted by the Workers Union in FCF Manufacturing Corporation inside the Freeport area of Bataan in Maribellas, Bataan, and the alleged attempts to harass the said workers. Una sa lahat, ginagarantayahan ng ating konstisyon ang karapatan ng mga manggagawang magunyon. Ang kanilang makipagtawaran at ang karapatang magwelga alinsunod sa itinakda ng batas. Bahagi ito ng mga naipagtagumpay na demokratikong karapatan na nakaukit sa saligang batas. Matapos ang makasaysayang Edsa uprising. Subalit sa aktwal, maraming balakid para malayang matamasa ng mga manggagawa ang mga karapatang ito. Pilit na itinuturing na krimen ang pag-uunyon ng mga manggagawa. O di kayay ibinabaon sa limot ang karapatan ng bawat manggawang magtayo o sumali sa unyon bilang plataporma nila sa paghigiit ng nakabubuhay na sahod. Regular na paggawa at mas makataong kalagayan ang kanilang kumpanya. Mapagpasyang pinangibabawa ng mga manggagawa ng FCF Manufacturing sa Bataan na karamihan ay kababaihang manggagawa ang mga balakid na ito. Sa isinagawang strike vote mula February 9, 29, hanggang March 3, 1,040 ang bumoto pabor sa welga habang 100 lang ang tumutol dito. Subsidiary ang FCF Manufacturing ng Fashion Focus Limited na nakabasa sa China. At gumagawa ito ng leather bags at wallets ng luxury brands na Coach at Kate Spade. Tinatayang nasa 3,000 ang mga manggagawa sa FCF kabilang ang mga kontraktual. Ano ba ang dahilan ng pagwe-welga ng mga manggagawa ng FCF? 10 pesos na umento ang ginigiit nila sa CBA negotiation. Pero 2 pesos lang ang offer ng kanilang management. Malaking insulto ito sa mga manggagawa, lalo't milyong-milyong dolyar ang iniiaakyat nila sa malalaking luxury brands. Tatlong salik ang nakikita ng kinatawang ito ng Gabriella Women's Party kung bakit mahalaga ang napipintong welga sa FCF Manufacturing sa Bataan. Una, ikinasa ang welga sa gitna ng paggunita ng buwan ng kababaihan at ng pandaigdigang araw ng kababaihang anak pawis na may historikal na ugat sa malawakang welga rin ng mga kababaihang manggagawa sa Russia at Amerika. Pangalawa, sa kalagayang humigit-kumulang, 6% na lang ang unyonisadong manggagawa at sa sitwasyong mabibilang sa daliri ang mga inilulunsad na welga ng mga manggagawa, makasaysayan ang ipinamalas na tapang ng mga manggagawa ng FCF Manufacturing para ituloy ang welga. Pangatlo, sa Bataan din pumutok ang pinakaunang welga sa loob ng Export Prazing Zone noong 1982 sa pangunguna ng mga manggawang kababaihan ng Inter Asia Garments. Kaya naman, mahalagang masuportahan ang welga ng mga manggagawa ng FCF Manufacturing na ibigay ang hinihiling na 10 pesos na umento. Sa halip na deployan sila ng mga police at militar at sa halip na supili ng kanilang welga, mahigpit na susubaybayan ng Gabriella Women's Party at mga pangmanggawang organisasyon ang welga sa FCF. Dagdag sahod ang hinihingi nila tulad ng ninanais ng kapulungang ito, kaya mahalagang masuportahan natin sila. Mabuhay ang mga manggawang kababaihan, itaguyod ang karapatang magunyon at magwelga ng mga manggawang. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Congresswoman Arlene Brosas. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of Honorable Brosas to the Committee on Rules for Proper Action.
The speech of Congresswoman Arlene Brosas is referred to the Committee on Rules. Any objection there being none? Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, still under the unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill 9349 under Committee Report 962. And I ask the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
There is a motion to resume consideration of House Bill 9349, and the Secretary General is directed to read the title.
House Bill Number 9349 and Act Reinstituting Absolute Divorce as an Alternative Mode for the Dissolution of Marriage.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we, the parliamentary status of the bill is, we are in the period of interpolation. And I move that we recognize Representative Lagman as to sponsor the bill. And we also recognize the Honorable Rufus Rodriguez to interpolate. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished representative from Albay is recognized to sponsor the said bill. And the distinguished gentleman from Cagayan de Oro is recognized for his interpolation. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I know if the honorable gentleman from Albay will be available to some interventions?
Yes, willingly, Mr. Speaker. I have been long waiting for the distinguished gentleman from Cagayan de Oro City to make his interpolation so that we could have an instructive dialogue and interaction.
Thank you, my distinguished colleague. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My first point will be a constitutional point. We go to the jugular. In other words, the most important point about the divorce bill that our distinguished colleague is sponsoring. Under the Constitution, Mr. Speaker, Article 17, the 18, the family, it states that the state recognizes Article 14, Section 1, Article 15, Section 1, the state recognizes the Filipino family as the foundation of the nation. Accordingly, it shall strengthen its solidarity and actively promote its development. It says here, strengthen its solidarity and actively promote its total development. So, my question is, Mr. Speaker, is it not that the House bill, which is being proposed, which is Committee Report 962, reinstituting absolute divorce as an alternative mode for the dissolution of marriage, does this not directly contravene the Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines?
Mr. Speaker, it does not. And this provision in the Constitution is not cast in stone. And it is more of a prescription of a standard or a norm. Even with this constitutional provision, together with Section 12 and Section 2 of Article 15, the Constitution does not prohibit the Congress to enact an absolute divorce law. On the contrary, Mr. Speaker, the 1987 Constitution, the commissioners of the 1986 Constitution Commission led by Father Reverend by Father Joaquín Bernas, unanimously agreed that the Congress can pass an absolute divorce law. The following proceedings are instructive. After the late Commissioner Chito Gastón introduced the opposite concepts of marriage and family, Father Bernas rose to interpolate him in this wise. And I quote, "Father Bernas, just one question, and I am not sure it has been categorically answered. I refer specifically to the proposal of Commissioner Gastón. Is this to be understood as a prohibition of a general law on divorce? His intention is to make this prohibition so that the legislature cannot pass a divorce law." "Mr. Gastón, Mr. Presiding Officer, that was not primarily my intention. My intention was primarily to encourage the social institution of marriage, but not necessarily discourage divorce." "Father Bernas, no. My question is more categorical. Does this carry the meaning of prohibiting a divorce law?" "Mr. Gastón, no, Mr. Presiding Officer." "Father Bernas, thank you. In the subsequent proceeding, the following exchange transpired between Commissioners Jose Benzon and Maria Teresa Nueva. "Mr. Benzon, will this in any way preclude Congress from approving a law on divorce? "Nueva, we discussed that yesterday, and I think we reiterated that it does not." "Mr. Benzon, it does not." "Nueva, no, Mr. Benzon. So, even if this section or this sentence is approved, the one referred to by the distinguished Rufus Rodriguez, Congress will still have every right to pass a divorce law under certain circumstances as it may deem fit. It should be underscored, Mr. Speaker, that no commissioner posited a dissenting vote. While it is the obligation of the state to uphold these principles, it is likewise the obligation of the state to rescue couples and children from an irremediable shattered marriage. So many countries, Mr. Speaker, have the same provision on the viability of marriage and the state protection to marriage and the family. But all of these countries have legalized divorce in varying degrees of liberality, including notarial divorce in Catholic countries like in Colombia, Brazil, Bolivia, and Mexico, and email divorce in Portugal. For the information of our colleagues and the public, and for the record, allow me to identify these countries. Colombia. The Constitution of Colombia states, "The family is the basic nucleus of society. The state and society guarantee the integral protection of the family. An act shall determine the inalienability and disability of a family patrimony. The family's honor, dignity, and intimacy are inviolable." This is virtually identical with the Philippine Constitution. However, in 2005 or 19 years ago, Colombia liberalized its old divorce law under decree 4436. Under this new law, if both spouses agree on seeking a divorce, they can do so in front of a notary instead of having to face a family court judge. However, even with this liberalized divorce law, Colombia's divorce rate is still one of the lowest in the world at 0.7% per 1,000 people. Ireland. The Constitution of Ireland provides, "The state recognizes the family as the natural, primary, and fundamental unit group of society and as a moral institution possessing inalienable and imprescriptible rights, antecedent and superior to all positive law. The state guarantees to protect the family in its constitution and authority as the necessary basis of social order and as indispensable to the welfare of the nation and the state. The state pledges itself to guide with especial care the institution of marriage on which the family is founded and to protect it against attack." Despite these constitutional provisions, Ireland legalized divorce 28 years ago in 1996. But compared to the rest of Europe and the world, the divorce rate in Ireland, where devout Catholicism is predominantly practiced, is considered remarkably low with only 0.7 divorces per 1,000 people as of 2023, or not even 1%. Mali. The Mali Constitution provides, Article 6, "Residence, property, private, and family life, confidentiality of correspondence and communications are inviolable." Mali is a predominantly Muslim country where divorce has long been legal, but in 2011 it amended its existing divorce law to allow women to initiate divorce. Let us go to Latin America. In Peru, the Constitution of Peru reads, "The community and the state extend especial protection to children, adolescents, mothers, and the elderly in society in situation of abandonment." They also protect the family and promote marriages, which are recognized as natural and fundamental institutions of society. However, despite this constitutional provision similar to that of the Philippines, Peru legalized divorce 23 years ago in 2001. But as far back as the mid-1400s during the height of the Inca civilization, divorce could be upheld if a couple was childless. Guatemala. The Constitution of Guatemala provides, invoking the name of God, "We, the representatives of the people of Guatemala, recognizing the family as the primary and fundamental genesis of the spiritual and moral values of society and the state as the one responsible for promoting common good." It part of the states, "The state guarantees the social, economic, and judicial protection of the family." Despite this provision, divorce became legal in Guatemala in 1987 or 37 years ago. Despite no-fault divorce being available, it has the lowest divorce rate in all of Latin America with 0.2 divorces per 1,000 people as of 2023. This is mostly attributed to cultural norms and the privacy given to the family. Uruguay. The constitution provision of Uruguay provides, "The family is the basis of our society. The state shall safeguard its moral and material stability so that children may be properly read within that society." But despite this provision, which is similar to ours, Uruguay legalized divorce way back in 1907 or 117 years ago under the ground of husband's cruelty, and by 2012, women could petition for divorce without a stated cause. Brazil. The Constitution of Brazil reads, "The family, which is the foundation of society, shall enjoy especial protection from the state. For purposes of state protection, a stable union between a man and a woman is recognized as a family unit, and the law shall facilitate conversion of such unions into marriage." Again, despite this constitutional doctrines, Brazil legalized divorce in 1977 or 46 years ago. In January 2007, Brazilian couples can undergo a notarial divorce if they have no disputed property and no minor, minor or special needs children. Bolivia. In Bolivia, the Constitution provides, "The state recognizes and protects the family as the fundamental nucleus of society and guarantees the social and economic conditions necessary for its full development." It's again similar to the Philippine Constitution. It part of the states, "The state shall protect and assist those who are responsible for the family in the exercise of their obligations." Act Number 996 promulgated in 1988 amended the Bolivian Family Code and revised its old divorce statute, stating under Article 207 that men and women have equal rights to start divorce proceedings, and there are three methods of divorce. One, divorce in front of a notary, enabling many couples without minor children and common properties to divorce without the expense and uncertainty of court proceedings. Two, divorce by mutual agreement. And three, contested divorce. In Mexico. The Constitution provides, "Men and women are equal under the law. The law shall protect the organization and development of the family." Divorce has legally existed in Mexico for over a century or since 1914. But since the time of the Aztec civilization in the centuries back, divorce was legal. Both men and women had the right to initiate divorce and had rights over their property and custodianship of their children. Today, there are three types of divorce in Mexico. One, mutual divorce. Two, contested divorce. And three, notarial or administrative divorce. We go to Europe. In Portugal, the Constitution provides, under Article 67, family. One, as a fundamental element in society, the family shall possess the right to protection by society and the state and to the effective implementation of all conditions needed to enable family members to achieve personal fulfillment. Despite this provision, Portugal introduced divorce way back in 1910 and liberalized it further in 2008. The new law abolished the legal concept of fault, and it now allows two persons to launch an electronic divorce, which is known as the email divorce, to file an electronic request for no-fault collaborative divorce in a non-judicial administrative entity. In specific cases with no children, real property, alimony, or common address, a divorce can summarily be decreed within one hour. Spain, which brought the religious faith to the Philippines. The pertinent article of the Constitution of Spain reads, "The public authorities ensure social, economic, and legal protection of the family." Spain legalized divorce in 1981 or 43 years ago. In 2005, an express divorce process was introduced for uncontested divorce. Greece. The Constitution of Greece provides, "The institution of the family being the foundation of the preservation and improvement of the nation as well as marriage, motherhood, and childhood shall be protected by the state." Again, this is similar to the Philippine Constitution on the protection of marriage and the family. However, as far back as ancient Greece dating to 14,000 BCE, divorce was already practiced. Moreover, according to the authors of the book, A Brief History of Ancient Greece, Politics, Society, and Culture, divorce did not seem to have been looked down upon in early Greek civilization. In ancient Athens, both husband and wife had the power to initiate a divorce. In modern times, the grounds for filing for a divorce in Greece can be broadly categorized into two types: at-fault or contested and no-fault or consensual divorce. Germany. The German Constitution provides, "Marriage and the family shall enjoy the especial protection of the state. The care and upbringing of children is the natural right of parents and a duty primally incumbent upon them. The state shall watch over them in the performance of this duty." At the turn of the previous millennium, on January 1, 1900, Germany already had a divorce law. In 1977, it instituted unilateral divorce with three-year separation as a requirement. Poland. Another Catholic country. Its constitutional provision reads, "Marriage being a union of a man and a woman as well as the family, motherhood, and parenthood shall be placed under the protection and care of the Republic of Poland." Poland legalized divorce 78 years ago in 1946. France. The Constitution of France reads, "The nation shall provide the individual and the family with the conditions necessary to their development." In the first French divorce law, the first French divorce law was passed in 1792 or almost 232 years ago during the French Revolution and was eventually incorporated into its civil code. After being abolished by the Catholic Bourbon Kings in 1816, it was reestablished by law on July 27, 1984. Now let's go to Asia. Saudi Arabia. The Constitution provides, "The family is the nucleus of Saudi society. The state shall take great pains to strengthen the bonds which hold the family together." Take note of the word "strengthen," which is similar to our Philippine Constitution. As a Muslim country, Saudi Arabia has long allowed divorce. Back in 2018, it canceled the House of Obedience article in its marriage law, which grants a husband the right to force his wife to return to her home against her will. As per the amendment in the law, the wife will no longer be forced to return to a married life when she does not want. The cancellation of the article takes into consideration the protection of a woman's dignity and the fact that married life should be based on mutual consent. Let me underscore this. Married life should be based on mutual consent. Vietnam. The state protects marriage and family and protects the interests of mothers and children. In ancient Vietnam, the Home Dock Code allowed divorce for both husband and wife. Today, there are two types of divorce in Vietnam: fault-based divorce and divorce by mutual consent. Emphasis of Vietnamese culture on the importance of the family and marriage are thought to be, by experts, to be the reason why divorce has remained at 0.2 divorces per 1,000 people in Vietnam as of 2023. China. The Chinese Constitution provides, "Marriage, the family, the mother, and the child are protected by the state." In 1950 or 74 years ago, the Communist Party introduced a marriage law that abolished feudal marriage practices and introduced a new marriage system based on monogamy, gender equality, and free marriage and divorce. But divorce in China has been possible for at least 2,000 years under the ancient Chinese law, although during those times, divorce can only be initiated by husbands. In 2019, 70% of divorce proceedings in China were initiated by wives. Mongolia. The Mongolian Constitution provides, "Men and women shall enjoy equal rights in political, economic, social, and cultural fields and in marriage." The state shall protect the interests of a family, motherhood, and the child. Divorce initiated by either spouse was rare but allowed in ancient Mongolia, in the ancient Mongol Empire. Today, Mongolia's Family Law of 1999 includes two procedures in the dissolution of marriages, judicial or ministerial. In the latter, a couple have consented mutually to divorce, and who do not have children under 18 or disputed property can apply for a divorce at the citizen's family registration office in their city or municipality, and such office is required to act on their application within 30 days. Now let us go to Africa. In Egypt, the Constitution provides, "The family is the basis of society and is based on religion, morality, and patriotism. The state and society oversee the commitment to the genuine character of the Egyptian family, its cohesion and stability, and the consolidation and protection of its moral values." As a Muslim country, Egypt has long legalized divorce. Even during the reign of the Pahrus, divorce was allowed as evidenced by papirus marriage contracts and ancient documents showing that in certain instances, women were compensated if their husbands divorced them, and the compensation was up to 10 times the value of their dowry. In 2000, President Bubarak signed a law that allows women to petition for divorce on the basis of incompleteness. Utopia. The Constitution of Utopia reads, "The family is the natural and fundamental unit of society and is entitled to protection by the state and the state."
Mr. Speaker, may I ask, what is the country you are now referring now?
Utopia. Egypt, Utopia.
Ethiopia, thank you.
Utopia.
Can you say it again, the constitutional provision?
Their civil code was passed in 1960 or 64 years ago, allowing divorce. Algeria. The family gains protection from the state and the society. All individual liberties are carried out within the respect of the rights of others, recognized by the Constitution, in particular, the respect of the right for honor, intimacy, and protection of the family. As early as 1984, Algeria already had a divorce law, but it was in 2005 when the forms to the family law introduced additional protection for wives. Somalia. Marriage is the basis of the family, which is the foundation of society. Its protection is a legal duty of the state. Rwanda. The family being the natural foundation of the Rwandan society is protected by the state. The state puts in place appropriate legislation and organs for the protection of the family in order to ensure that the family flourishes. The predominantly Christian country of Rwanda legalized divorce in August 28, 2016. Angola. The family is the basic nucleus of social organization and shall be the object of especial protection by the state. In 1975, following the independence from Portugal, Angola inherited elements of Portugal's civil law system, and there is a comprehensive family code that sets out the rule on divorce. Libya. The Libyan Constitution provides, "Family shall be the basis of society and shall be protected by the state. The state shall protect and encourage marriage." Libya's divorce law was promulgated in 1984 or 40 decades ago. Consequently, all of these countries, both Catholic, Christian, or non-Catholic or non-Christian, have similar provisions in their constitution for the protection of marriage and the family, and that marriage is inviolable. But despite this constitutional doctrines, all of these countries have divorce in varying degrees of liberality, Mr. Speaker. In fact, our proposed bill is much more stricter than the divorce laws. than the divorce laws in these Catholic and Christian countries. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker, distinguished colleague. After section one of Article fifteen, which states the state recognizes the Filipino family as the foundation of the nation, period, accordingly, it shall strengthen its solidarity and actively promote its total development. This is now followed, Mister Speaker, by a provision, direct provision on marriage. And what does section two, Articles five of the constitution provides, and I will read now, the constitutional provision of the Republic of the Philippines. Marriage as an inviolable social institution is the foundation of the family and shall be protected by the state. What is the meaning of inviolable as enshrined in the constitution? When we say inviolable, it means in all dictionaries, never to be broken. Second, it can never be infringed. Third, it cannot be dishonored. And then other dictionaries would state that it is indestructible, durable, invincible, stable, unassailable, and unbreakable. So my question, Mister Chairman, is this, because I have a survey also of this constitution, as this has been a debate since about three congresses ago. My question to the honorable distinguished colleague is, does the Columbia constitution states about the inviolability of marriage is inviolable found in the Columbia constitution?
May I now respond? Yes, Mister Speaker.
Can you read the provisions of Columbia?
I read it already, I will read it again.
Please repeat.
The chapter two on social, economic, and cultural rights
Yes.
of the Colombian constitution, more particularly Article forty-three reads in full, "The family is the basic nucleus of society. The state and society guarantees guarantee the integral protection of the family. An act shall determine the inalienable and unceivable family patrimony. The family's honor, dignity, and intimacy are inviolable." It starts with the families. In other words, this is virtually identical with the Philippine constitution.
No, Mister Speaker, with due respect, we should refer the inviolability to the fair to marriage and not other provisions.
There can be no family without marriage.
No, there can be families without marriage.
Or without union.
Many.
Without union. So the family is based on marriage, and when you protect the family and you make that family inviolable, that also extends to the basic institution which creates the family, and that is marriage. But whatever it is, Mister Speaker, our constitution does not prohibit that Congress can enact or cannot enact a divorce law. Nowhere in our constitution is there a provision which prohibits Congress from enacting a divorce law, including the nineteen thirty-five and the nineteen seventy constitution, despite that all of these doctrinal statements protecting the family, making marriage inviolable, are also present, just like in other countries. What is more inviolable when the constitution of these countries provide that marriage and the family shall be protected by the state? But these provisions do not deter these countries from instituting or legalizing divorce, because as I've said, these are standards and norms. For example, the Philippine constitution provides under section nineteen of Article two, that the Philippines shall develop a self-reliant and independent economy effectively controlled by Filipinos. That is in our Declaration of Principles and Policies. Why is the distinguished gentleman supporting House Resolution number seven when it detracts from this Declaration of Principle of the Philippine economy effectively controlled by Filipinos? That is the same as these other principles. They are not cast in stone, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Clearly, this is about divorce and not the economic amendments to the constitution. It's clear therefore.
It's, it's, it's the same scenario.
Finish. Colombia therefore does not have a direct statement that marriage is an inviolable social institution unlike the Philippines. I'll go now to the next constitution. How about Peru? Does Peru constitution states about the inviolable social institution of marriage? Peru.
Let's go to Peru.
Yes.
Peru says, the constitution, "The community and the state extend especial protection to children, adolescents, mothers, and elderly in a situation of abandonment. They also protect the family and promote marriage, which are recognized as natural and fundamental institutions of the state." What else do we demand from this very important statement? This virtually makes marriage inviolable. But Peru way back twenty-three years ago legitimized divorce.
Sir Speaker.
You do not need to have that word inviolable, because that pertains to a meaning which would cover the protection by the state of marriage and the family. Because if it is inviolable, it needs protection. But all of these constitutional precepts did not prohibit or deter these countries from instituting divorce.
Mister Speaker, clearly, Peru does not have the word inviolable and verba legis. In our constitution and in the principle, verba legis, it is very clear that we have the words inviolable social institution. Clearly, none in Colombia, none in Peru. And go now to Guatemala. Does Guatemala have the word inviolable? Because again, inviolable means unbreakable. It means indestructible. It means, and it means invincible and assailable. That is the meaning of inviable, which our constitution states. So maybe no, no. Let us go to Guatemala. They have a divorce law, admittedly, but does the constitution prohibit them because there is an inviolable social institution? Can we have Peru now? Can our distinguished colleague give us Peru, Peru's constitutional?
The constitution of Peru does not have the word inviolable, but it says marriage and the family shall be protected by the state. That is virtually the same. And you cannot be more protective than what the constitution says. And protection is equated with inviolability, because you cannot protect something which is destruct, which could be destroyed. So once it is inviable, inviolable, it has to be protected by the state. Again, despite this prohibition, Guatemala instituted divorce. And let me repeat, despite all of these provisions in our constitution on the sanctity of marriage, on the inviolability of marriage, on the protection of marriage and the family, the constitution does not prohibit this Congress from enacting a divorce law. On the contrary, the constitutional, the members of the Constituent Assembly said unanimously that Congress can enact a law on divorce, and we cannot be more papis than the Pope, than those who framed the constitution of the Philippines.
Again, Mister Speaker, the constitution of Guatemala does not state that marriage is an inviolable social institution. Protection, the word protection is special under any English language interpretation is different from the word inviolable. They have special, they have protection, but it is not synonymous to inviolability, unbreakability, durability. Let's go now to Uruguay. Can you cite if the constitution states the words inviolability that cannot be violated?
It does not, it does not.
Provisions.
It does not, Mister Speaker, but it provides for prescriptions virtually considered marriage as inviolable because marriage would need the protection of the state. We cannot be very dictionary wise when we interpret constitutions. We are, we are not invoking Webster here in our debate.
I am invoking the constitution that wins Webster. The constitution says inviolable, and that is why the honorable sponsor admits there is no word of inviolability in the Uruguay constitution. And it is different when you say protection, special, but inviolability in our constitution, words are placed there to have a definite meaning. And inviolability has definite meanings all over the world. It is therefore unbreakable. It is therefore unassailable, and it cannot be infringed whatsoever, because the word used by the constitution is inviolable. Now let's go now to Brazil. Does Brazil have the words that marriage is an inviolable social institution? Brazil, what does Brazil say?
Brazil's constitution provides that marriage and the family should be protected by the state.
No, therefore, inviolability, nothing inviolability. Only protection, Mister Speaker. I'm asking whether there is inviolability, because that will be the difference of our Philippine constitution. And that is why the Philippine constitution is unique. It will always protect the family. It will always protect the marriage, a union of man and woman. Let's go now to Bolivia.
Let me, let me just say.
Yeah, then Bolivia.
Uh, let me just say that despite the presence of the word inviolability in our constitution, our constitution does not prohibit Congress from enacting a divorce law. And the commissioners of the nineteen eighty-six Constitutional Convention said categorically in black and white that Congress can enact a divorce law despite the presence of the word inviolability in our constitution.
I have to take exception because what was read in the minutes of the particular issue of divorce. Father Bernas did not categorically say that he's in favor of divorce. He was asking Gascon, and he said, "Thank you afterwards." So there is no statement that he would say, "I am for divorce." A divorce could be, could be legislated in the Philippines. But let us go now to Mexico, Mexico.
Now, Mister Speaker.
Have this.
Mister Speaker, you don't actually say, "I love you," specifically when you mean that you love somebody.
That is a different matter, Mister Chairman.
It's always akin, Mister Speaker, because.
Never akin. There has to be a categorical statement by Father Bernas. There was none.
Let me read again.
Yeah.
The proceedings.
Who said about that?
I'll, I'll read the proceedings. Uh, let me go back to that proceedings. Father Bernas, just one question.
Yeah, question.
Yes, what do you do when you interpret it? You ask question.
Yeah, but that is.
Just one question. And I am not sure if it has been categorically answered. I refer specifically to the proposal of Commissioner Gascon. Is this to be understood as a prohibition of a general law on divorce? Mister Gascon, Mister President, Mister Presiding Officer, that was not primarily my intention. My intention was primarily to encourage the social institution of marriage, but not necessarily discourage divorce. Father Bernas, no, my question is more categorical, that this carry the meaning of prohibiting a divorce law. In other words, Father Bernas wanted to know whether Congress can pass a divorce law despite the provisions on family and marriage. Mister Gascon, no, Mister Presiding Officer. So what else would you like?
And what is the answer of Papa Bernas?
That he is in favor of a divorce law? That is very clear in the interchanges. And moreover, that was clarified by Mister.
Before that, just go to Bernas first.
So even if this section or this sentence is approved, Congress will still have every right to pass a divorce law under certain circumstances as it may deem fit. And I, let me just, uh, add that in subsequent, in a subsequent column or columns in the inquiry, Father Bernas was in favor of the divorce law.
Well, based on the constitutional minutes, after he said, "No, it will not prohibit divorce," Father Bernas said, "Thank you," and sat down. He did not state that I agree with the position, because, Mister Speaker, all these constitutional minutes and the personal observation of the members of the commission has not, has no weight persuasive, but it's not conclusive. And as with the Superb Court in a line of cases, while they may persuasive, it does not, it does not, it's not, they are not conclusive. And that is why I am saying that to say that all the Constitutional Commission members were in favor of having a position that divorce can be here is not borne by the records. But let me now go to Mexico. What does Mexico state?
Does not have that inviolability, but it has words and phrases akin to inviolability.
There is no sense as akin to. It has to be either inviolable or not. So now we go now to Europe. After we were in South America, in Portugal, does it have the word inviolability, inviolable?
Well, it's obvious there is no word, but there are words and phrases akin to, similar to inviolability. Let me just tell the distinguished interpreter that his time is running out. He's, he's asking things which are obvious.
Mister Speaker, he had a very long time in reading these constitutional provisions. So therefore, for me.
No, 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 I. No, 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 I'm just concerned that your time is running out. I don't, I don't, I don't mean that you should stop, but we have rules to follow.
Yes, because he read in a long litany of this constitution. So let's now go to, so Portugal, you admit the word inviolable. Inviolable is not present, distinguished colleague. It's not, it's not present, Portugal.
What do you think? Did you hear me say inviolable in the Constitution of Portugal?
No, Mr. Speaker, I'm just going to.
No, there is none, but there are similar phrases and words akin to.
Now let's go now to Spain, where we were 330 years, we were under its jurisdiction. Does Spain, which provides divorce, does it have the word inviolable social institution?
No, it does not, but with respect to marriage and the family, it provides for the protection of these institutions akin to inviolability.
So I just go now to the others to make, to shorten my, this point. How about Greece, Germany, Poland, and France? Does this constitution have the word inviolable?
Mr. Speaker, the same answer.
So there are none in the constitutions that we referred to. No statement about inviolability, unbreakability, unassailable. Then let's go to Asia. In Asia, how about Saudi Arabia? Is there a word inviolable in the constitution?
Same answer, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, Vietnam?
Same answer, Mr. Speaker.
And China?
Same answer, Mr. Speaker.
And you know, the constitution of China will not even matter because in China, they have a constitution, but they have no constitutionalism. There's a distinction between having a constitution and constitutionalism because in constitutionalism, they have a vibrant judiciary to check. The judiciary of China cannot check the Communist Party of China. So let's forget about Chinese constitution. Let's go now to Vietnam. Same answer.
Same answer.
None. Let's go now to Mongolia.
Same answer.
None also. Ethiopia.
Same answer.
No inviolability. Algeria.
Same answer.
Somalia.
Same answer.
None. Rwanda.
Same answer.
Angola.
Same answer.
Libya.
Same answer.
Therefore, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, what was recited by the honorable colleague does not fit into our constitutional requirement and the requirement of inviolability, which was precisely placed by the constitutional framers in '87, which was also found in other, in our family code and so forth because they want to have a stability and unbreakability of marriage. So therefore, clearly, since our constitution has the word inviolable, any divorce law will violate the constitution, directly violate the constitution. In fact, Mr. Speaker, in the case of Imbong versus Ochoa, GR number 20489, April 8, 2014, does our distinguished colleague know the decision in this case about, about family as the biggest basic social institution and the marriage?
Yes, that is the leading case where the constitutionality of the reproductive health law was challenged. And the Supreme Court held that the reproductive health law in general is constitutional.
In general, but on the specific issue, Mr. Speaker, because I voted against the RH bill. One of only about 30 who voted against the RH bill during the time of President Aquino. Very clearly, what does the Supreme Court say about RH Bill Section 23A2I? This section of the RH law permits RH procedures even with only the consent of the spouse undergoing the procedure, disregarding spousal consent. According to the Supreme Court, this section intrudes into marital privacy and autonomy and goes against, here is the word, it goes against the constitutional safeguards for the family as a basic social institution. That is the Supreme Court. What does the distinguished colleague say about Imbong versus Ochoa on Section 23A2I?
You know, Mr. Speaker, distinguished representative from Cagayan, the Oro City, even the Supreme Court can be mistaken. So I would not agree to the validity of that ruling of the Supreme Court. But that is the Supreme Court, then let it be so. But most probably in a future case, that can be reversed. The Supreme Court is supreme even in its errors.
So, Mr. Speaker, because the Supreme Court has ruled that this section violates Article 15, Section 1, he would now say, or the distinguished colleague now says, the Supreme Court is wrong.
The Supreme Court can be wrong, it's a human institution. But let me say that a woman cannot be a woman if she does not control her own body.
Well, that's another issue. What they're saying is that the Supreme Court already ruled in the case of Imbong versus Garcia that it is unconstitutional, this section, because it goes against the constitutional safeguards for the family as the basic social institution. Now, Mr. Speaker, a divorce bill has a weakening effect on the bond of marriage, which should be protected and promoted by the state, Article 15, Sections 1 and 2. The ground stated in the bill will create a trend or culture in the country that the mere finding or commission of such offense or ground warrants or deserves the ending of an inviolable social institution. The very thought that will be injected to the minds of couples that there will be ways to get out of marriage, once it gets rocky or problematic, will produce in them that mental reservation and a limited sense of spousal commitment that will weaken their strive to work for the solidarity, survival, and flourishing of their marriage, which the state cherishes and protects under the family code. So, Mr. Speaker, though we acknowledge that there are complicated marriages that might need the cutting of ties already, we believe, Mr. Speaker, that introduction of a divorce law will reduce, if not reverse, the general rule on marriage and the constitutional policy of protecting and strengthening marriages. And hence, it is therefore unconstitutional. In addition, Mr. Speaker, there are studies that say that the presence of a divorce law alters the seriousness of couples to invest in their marriage. Here, we have therefore a study by Betsy Stevenson, who said, "People invest in their marriages to the extent that they expect them to stay intact or the intent to which their partners can credibly commit to sharing the fruits of such investments, weakening the marriage contract by making it easier as what this bill does." For someone, easier for someone to exit the marriage changes the incentive to invest in marriage. Couples are less likely to have children in the first two years, are less likely to support each other sequentially through school, and more likely to have two full-time workers in the labor force. This observation, Mr. Speaker, concretizes the weakening effect of a divorce law to the spouses supposed to be lifetime commitment and investment in marriage. We have annulment of marriage, but unlike annulment of marriage in the family law, family code, proceedings which slook into the gravity of grounds in order to cut a marital tie, the presence of a divorce law will create a trend or culture that suggests that infirm, problematic marriages can and should be terminated at instant. They can terminate at instant emotional distress. You will hear the comment of our distinguished sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, no groom or bride enters marriage with a thought of divorcing later. It is only a skeptic, skeptic, which would say that otherwise. Mr. Speaker, in Te versus Te, the Supreme Court was right when it said that dissolution of the marriage is a merciful endearment of a long-dead marriage. So what we bring to the family court is not a vibrant marriage. It is a marriage which has been shattered beyond repair. As I've said yesterday, it is a cadaver of a marriage which is brought before the family court. Yes, we have annulment, but annulment covers circumstances simultaneous or concurrent with the celebration of the marriage. It must not cover circumstances subsequent to the marriage or during the cohabitation. And many of the causes for divorce is, are those which happen during cohabitation. So, the annulment process is not complete. It is, it is not a full protection for marriages, for spouses who are in irremediably broken marriages, affecting even their children. Mr. Speaker, since the time of the gentleman is expired, may I just say this in conclusion. Despite the presence of inviolability of marriage in our constitution, the constitution does not prohibit Congress from enacting a divorce law. What is not prohibited by the constitution can be done legally, and it is not unconstitutional. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, that is the opinion of our distinguished colleague. The opinion of this humble representation is the word inviolable is enshrined in the constitution. And any law that will break this inviolability will be constitutionally infirm. And, Mr. Speaker, I would say annulment right now is about causes that during or before the marriage. Then all we have to do is to amend the family code and add more causes, even circumstances arising after the marriage. In other words, we don't have to go to absolute divorce. Our family code is there. And there's annulment and there's psychological incapacity, Article 36. And, Mr. Speaker, for example, is the gentleman aware that there has been an OCTA, and this is always out, the OCTA research, and the OCTA research group last October 2023? Is he aware that according to the survey conducted by OCTA Research Group last 2023, 51% majority, Mr. Speaker, oppose the legalization of divorce in the country, with 41% in support and 9% undecided? So those who support the divorce bill is only 41%. There are 51% oppose, others as undecided. And I will represent this in the next, in the next, in my next time to interpolate. I will show here the table to be able to show that in the details of the survey, we saw that across all economic classes of A, B, C, and D, E, opposition against divorce is greater. And that is why if the, if the distinguished colleagues insist that I terminate now, I still have so many questions. So may I just request the Honorable Majority Leader to be called tomorrow? Because look at this, I still have, I'm still going to the literature on the effects of divorce everywhere in the world.
In other words, the distinguished Rupus Rodriguez wants a second round?
No continuation, not a second round, Mr. Speaker.
How can you continue something which has expired already?
That is the decision of the speaker.
We have rules to follow.
This is always extended if you want to extend it.
We have rules to follow.
I am requesting the speaker to continue my interpolation because his, our sponsor is bringing some fundamental change to our married life, to marriage, to family. So fundamental that the constitution is really affected and will really be able to have the constitutional effect. And that is why, Mr. Speaker, I think he should allow us, you know, when we have a debate, we always allow our distinguished colleague to finish his interpolation because in the interest of informed choice of our members of the House of Representatives, a interpolator, a member of Congress should be able to give, to be given time so that the records will be resolved. And in other words, it will be recorded and they will know what has been debated on. So my request, our speaker to rule.
Mr. Speaker.
If I can continue.
Session suspended.
Continue mo na lang. Rupus, just continue.
Oh, I continue, yes.
Yes, continue.
May I continue?
You can continue, I can wait for you forever. Just continue.
Continue na lang.
Continue mo na lang. Ah? Pas na? Sige. Pa na tapos kabukas.
Pa tapos ako. Finish tumal. Na na lang, sir.
So, so, bukas na lang. Oh, bukas na lang daw. So, basta, kung pwede, mauna kami bukas. Ah? Because meron pang isang gusto pag-interferensi, ano? Gas. Pa na, bigyan pin. So, pa wala.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we we note the request of the Honorable Rupus Rodriguez, and I move that we suspend the consideration of House Bill Number 9349 until tomorrow and with the assurance that the Honorable Rupus Rodriguez will be given priority in the interpolation tomorrow. So, let's move, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion that we will continue consideration of House Bill 9349 tomorrow. Is that correct, Majority Leader?
Suspend consideration for today until tomorrow.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Congressman.
I agree to that with the corollary that if possible, this bill should be called first after the reference of business so that we can finish the interpolation tomorrow because I understand that Congressman Tambunting also wants to interpolate.
We will take.
And if we could finish this bill tomorrow.
Yes.
I will truly appreciate it.
We will take note of your request, Congressman Lagman, and I'm sure the majority will consider such requests insofar as the House Bill will be tackled in your preferred time, given that there's a lot in agenda for tomorrow. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there's a motion to suspend the consideration of House Bill Number 9349.
So there's a motion to suspend consideration of House Bill 9349. Is there any objection? There being none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of Congressman Christian Telyap and Kabayan Partilist Congressman Ronzalo. They are from they are barangay captains of the municipality of Victoria and municipality of San Jose, province of Tarlac, headed by ABC President Bonifacio A. Francisco and ABC President Joselito Capitulo, Councilor Calvin Sardja of Kabayan Partilist as part of their capacity building and benchmarking activity here in Metro Manila.
Sa mga panahuhin ng ating kagalanggalan na kinatawan mula sa Tarlac at mula sa Partilis ng Kabayan, namely Congressman Christian Yap and Congressman Ronzalo. Sa lahat ng mga nakaberde diyan sa kanan, malugod po namin kayong tinatanggap sa Kongreso. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may humbly request that we acknowledge the presence of the guests of Congressman Edsel Lagman. They are the members of the Divorce Pilipinas Coalition, namely Ms. A.J. Alfafara, Mila Milikdem, Evelyn Polognon, Rex Lanos, Heidi Sanchez, Clarissa Gabriel, Michelle Bulang, Raquel Marquez, Helen Fernandez, Marcelina Esteban, Sara Heon, Melinda Coronacion, Rehina Deloso, Arien Romero, Divina Oluguer, Edgar Durano, Luisito Ditán, Rudy Malikdem, Edna Crisol, and Maricargo.
To the guests of Congressman Edsel Lagman from Divorce Pilipinas Coalition, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, I humbly request that we acknowledge the presence of the guests of Congressman Christopher Son Coco Em Yap. It is Attorney Gari Manigo.
To the guests of Congressman Kokoyap, mula po sa Southern Lake, Attorney Gari Manigo, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Likewise again, Mr. Speaker, I humbly request that we acknowledge the presence of the guests of the First District Bukidnon Representative Jose Manuel F. Alba. They are the barangay captains of the municipality of Bungon, Bukidnon, and will be led by Mayor Roelio Haraula. They are Honorable Roelio Haraula, Honorable Billy Puklau, Honorable George Buco, Honorable Rudy Haraula, Honorable Robert Yare, Honorable Gelbes Bergara, Honorable Ramel Aveniaw, Honorable Jaime Magno, Honorable Elmer Bancelai, Honorable Raymond Boer, Honorable Danilo Ortizano, Honorable Avilina Batal, Honorable Joseph Diokson, Honorable Rolando Tuto, Honorable Marlon Babion, Honorable Annabel Bahuyo, and Honorable Joseph Bahuyo.
To the guests of Congressman Alba from the province of Bukidnon, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up the business for the day, and under the business of the day, we take up the consideration and approval and second reading of the following House Bill, House Bill Number 9936, Committee Report 996. And may we ask the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
There's a motion to approve on second reading for consideration, House Bill 9936, and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said bill.
House Bill 9936, An Act Allowing the Department of Education the Flexibility to Determine the Pedagogical Approaches to be Implemented in the Basic Education Curriculum, Amending for the Purpose, Section 5 of Republic Act Number 10533, otherwise known as the Enhanced Basic Education Act of 2013.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate for House Bill Number 9936.
Is there any objection? There being none. Your debates open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Honorable Roman Romolo to sponsor the House Bill and consequently to recognize also Representative Manuel for his interpolation.
The sponsor of the House Bill, Congressman Roman Romolo, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Majority Leader. Esteemed colleagues, I rise today to address this august body to present House Bill Number 9936, titled An Act Allowing the Department of Education the Flexibility to Determine the Pedagogical Approaches to be Implemented in a Basic Education Curriculum, Amending for the Purpose, Section 5 of Republic Act Number 1010533, otherwise known as the Enhanced Basic Education Act of 2013, which I have co-authored with the Honorable Mitri Kahayon Uwi. The lamentable state of our education cannot be attributed to any single issue. It is many issues that this representative has been seeking to address in the various measures that we have authored and sponsored during this representative's term in Congress. I stand before you and look positively towards your continued support in putting in place effective solutions which seek to address the issues plaguing our education system. The K-12 curriculum currently uses the spiral progression approach across subjects which allegedly is designed to build on the same concepts in each grade level and develop in increasing complexity from Kinder to Grade 10. Unfortunately, the introduction of the spiral progression approach in lieu of the previous approach wherein the Department of Education had the free hand to determine, based on their judgment, what approach would be best used in order to ensure the mastery of each discipline was not based on solid data which considers the unique educational environment of the Philippines. This haphazard introduction of the mandate to use a specific approach across all disciplines proves to be the undoing of our basic education. There are some subjects which have a use of such approach, while in others it does not prove as effective, leading to repetition, lack of depth, and lack of concentration for needed learning areas such as science. It also leads to omissions of some fundamental concepts, challenges in their content expertise, and provision and provision of resources. In fact, in one of the reports of the EDCOM II, it is stated that a more flexible pedagogical approach is recommended wherein teachers will be able to utilize the appropriate approach or set of approaches that considers the diversity of learners, subject matter, classroom situation, and other essential factors. It is a basic rule that unless otherwise deemed necessary, legislation should constrain itself to the broad strokes of policies and leave the details of the implementation to the expertise of the implementing agencies. Thus, in our amendment, we will allow the Department of Education to employ the approach it deems most effective to ensure the mastery of knowledge and skills after each level. We also place a safeguard that any such approach and curriculum implemented shall be subject to periodic review of not less than once every five years, unless circumstances necessitate an earlier period to determine the relevancy and effectiveness in achieving educational goals. This is only so that we can also assure ourselves that we keep abreast of the best pedagogical practices in the delivery of education to our learners, demonstrating our commitment to continuous improvement and excellence in education. Colleagues, this bill represents a pivotal step towards revitalizing our education system, one that is responsive to the evolving needs of our learners and the demands of the 21st century. I urge this House to support this crucial legislation as we strive to deliver quality education that empowers our youth and secures the future prosperity of our nation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I am ready to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Congressman Roman. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, move that you recognize Representative Manuel of the Kabataan Partilist.
Congressman Manuel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the good sponsor yield to a few questions?
Yes, gladly, to the gentleman from the Kabataan Partilist.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Matalong ko lang po, Mr. Speaker. In a nutshell, ano po itong spiral progression? At bakit po explicitly ito nilagay dati sa batas? Ano po ang naging reasoning? Kasi ako, Mr. Speaker, nagtataka ako bakit kinailangan na ilagay talaga siya, ano? And I actually agree dun sa intent nitong panokalang batas na dapat hindi nakaspecify ang ganong iisang pamamaraan lamang. So again, Mr. Speaker, ano 'yung spiral, tapos bakit siya nakalagay talaga?
Well, basically, Mr. Speaker, the gentleman from the Kabataan Partilist, the spiral progression cuts up or divides a subject matter into different competencies, and then the the purpose is for each competency to be taught in different levels. Why it was introduced? Why it was specified in the 2013 law? To be honest, I am not aware, but probably it is also due to the influence of many international papers. During that time, many presented papers saying that in certain countries, this was used. In fact, up to today, Honorable Manuel, those who are championing this specific pedagogy cites first world nations, but they fail to consider that the Philippines is not the same as all other countries. We have we have a different education environment. There are needs that we have to also adopt and adjust to. And I think allowing the DEP Ed that flexibility will again enable learners and our teachers to be able to reach that potential.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Next, Mr. Speaker, noong in implement na natin and kasama nga ang itong spiral progression, ano ang mga tampok na kahirapan na experience noong ating mga paaralan? And of course, teachers and students dahil nga minamandate talaga itong spiral progression.
Yes. And the EDCOM II, in fact, did did some FGD, Focal Group Discussions with teachers. And in these focal group discussions with the teachers here in Metro Manila, and it also happened in some provinces, the common complaint really was that there was a lack of preparation because even from the part of you, a point of view of a teacher, to implement a spiral progression requires training and also requires textbooks, materials, so that they can be properly guided. But all this are lacking. In fact, even our parents, even many of our students complain about the fact that because they do not get it in one whole quarter, the whole the mastery of a particular subject, then it leads to them not being able to, in fact, master the whole program. In fact, Honorable Manuel, taking a look at the PISA examination, the SEIA PLM examinations, the TIMS examination, the the PISA, we had two already, 2018, 2022. The 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 PISA exam are subjects that are foundational subjects, reading, mathematics, and science. In all three, in 2018, we did not fare well. In 2022, we may have improved, but we did not fare well. Meaning, in the foundational subjects, we have to work on that. And as you earlier asked, what is spiral progression? It works on the foundations. So we must have a mastery first of the foundational subjects, the foundational skills. And our results show that we must first focus on this, and we must not complicate the learning of our children.
Hearing that, Mr. Speaker, I would agree with the sponsor na actually hindi nagdulot ng significant na improvements ang pagrequire ng pagtuturo using a spiral progression. Kaya mas mainam na hayaan natin ang ating agencies and of course, in consultation with our teachers and the other stakeholders. Kung ano talaga ang based on their practice 'yung magiging pinakamainam na mga pamamaraan para ituro ang iba't ibang subjects sa ating basic education. With that, Mr. Speaker, I thank the sponsor for answering our questions.
Thank you, Honorable Manuel.
Thank you very much, Congressman Raoul Manuel. Yes, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no more interpolators, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and interpolation and debate.
Is there any objection? There being none. The period of sponsorship is now closed. Yes, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments for House Bill Number 9936.
Is there any objection? There being none. Period of amendments now open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move now that we proceed with the individual amendments.
There being no committee amendments. We will now proceed to individual amendments. Is there any objection? There being none. Most approved. The Chair recognizes Congresswoman Stella Kimbo from Marikina.
Mr. Speaker, may I propose the following individual amendment? On page two, section one, line three, before the word "and," delete the phrase "their relevancy" and in lieu thereof, insert the word "its relevance." I so move, Mr. Speaker.
I accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say? You accept?
We accept.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Kimbo.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Period of amendments is now closed. There being no objection. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 9936 as amended.
There is a motion to approve. There is a motion to approve House Bill 9936 as amended. All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who are in favor, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9936 is approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading House Bill Number 9978 as contained in Committee Report Number 972. And may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the...
There is a motion to consider House Bill 9978. And the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the House Bill.
House Bill 9978, an Act Providing for a Moratorium on Student Loan Payments During Calamities, Disasters, Crisis Situations, and Other Emergencies.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate. And also move to recognize Representative Mark Go to sponsor the bill.
The period of sponsorship is now open, and the Chair recognizes Congressman Mark Go.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good evening, my dear colleagues. It is with pride that I stand before you this afternoon or this evening to sponsor House Bill Number 9978 under Committee Report 972. This bill, which was reported out by both the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Disaster Resilience, provides for a moratorium on student loans during calamities, disasters, crisis situations, and other emergencies. Mr. Speaker, the Commission on Higher Education implemented the Stadionao Pay Later Program from 1995 to 2017, which released about 474 million pesos in loans that benefited 12,476 student borrowers. However, this loan was discontinued with the enactment into law of Republic Act Number 10687, otherwise known as the Unified Student Financial Assistance System for Tertiary Education Act, or the UNIFAS Law, in 2015, which provides scholarships, grants in age, and national student loan program under the UNIFAS Board. This loan program was further amended through its incorporation in the Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education Act and the Republic Act 10931, and renamed as the Student Loan Program for Tertiary Education. Mr. Speaker, we all know that the Philippines is located in the typhoon belt and the Pacific Rim of fire. Hence, typhoons, earthquakes, and volcanic eruptions, which wreck abok on the lives of our people, have become common occurrences. Many Filipinos have become victims of these natural calamities, not to mention being affected by fires which result to the destruction of their homes or living in conflict-affected areas and needing to flee to avoid being caught in the crossfire, as well as accidents and various forms of tragedy, crisis, or emergency situation. Mr. Speaker, the bottom line is many of our families under these conditions are greatly affected. Mr. Speaker, this bill seeks to provide adequate protection and relief to students and their families affected by calamities, disasters, emergency, or crisis situations, and who have student loans by imposing a moratorium on the payment of all fees, interest, and other charges on loans for higher education and technical vocational education, as well as training incurred by students enrolled in public or private HCIs and TBIs in relation to student loan programs administered by the schools themselves or by UNIFAS Board or other government agency or its instrumentality. Mr. Speaker, this legislative proposal further enumerates the criteria for imposing a moratorium which include the following. First, a declaration of a state of calamity or emergency by the President of the Philippines, the area in which, number two, the student temporarily or permanently resides was affected by a disaster, calamity, emergency, or crisis situation. And number three, notwithstanding the preceding requirements, the student or his or her family has incurred injuries or damages during a calamity, disaster, emergency, or crisis situation. Mr. Speaker, the objective of this piece of legislation is to ensure access of students to quality and affordable education at all times. With the moratorium, we can help protect and shield our students and their families from the financial strain of unforeseen natural or man-made occurrences. Most of all, we can help them avoid further devastation that would shatter their hopes and dreams of completing their education for a brighter future. Mr. Speaker and our esteemed colleagues, I humbly urge you to join me in pushing for the immediate passage of this measure. Again, thank you very much. At Magandang Gabi po, sa inyo lahat.
Thank you very much Congressman Mark Go. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpreters, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
There is a motion that we close the period of sponsorship and debate? Any objections? There being none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none. Period amendments is now open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee and individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
There is a motion to close the period of amendments. There being no committee or individual amendments. Any objections? There being none. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading House Bill Number 9978 and approve, consider its approval.
There is a motion that we approve. House Bill 99... 9978. All those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who are not in favor, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9978 is thereby approved on second reading. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Majority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we take, consider House Bill Number 9982 and ask the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
There is a motion to consider House Bill 9982. And the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the House Bill.
House Bill 9982, an Act Strengthening the Establishment and Operation of All Public and Private Higher Education Institutions.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate and likewise recognize the sponsor, again, Mr. Representative Mark Go.
There is a motion to open the period of sponsorship and debate? There being no objection? Motion's approved. Congressman Mark Go, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues. Isa pong mapagpala yang gabi sa ating lahat. I am honored again to stand in this August chamber to sponsor House Bill 9982 in substitution of House Bill Number 7990, which strengthens the establishment and operation of higher education institutions composed of public and private colleges and universities. As of academic year 2022, 2023, Mr. Speaker, there are 2,424 HCIs, which include 113 state universities and colleges and their campuses, 136 local universities and colleges, and 1,729 private HCIs, as well as 13 government schools supervised by the Commission on Higher Education. All these HCIs, Mr. Speaker, have a total enrolment of 4.4 million. Mr. Speaker, Section 4, Article 4 of the 1987 Constitution has mandated the state to recognize the complementarity roles of public and private institutions in the educational system and to exercise reasonable supervision and regulation of educational institutions. This bill, Mr. Speaker, promotes the complementarity of more than 2,000 higher education institutions by harnessing their strengths and enhancing their capacities to produce highly skilled and globally competitive graduates and professionals. Indeed, Mr. Speaker, both public and private HCIs play vital roles in the education system. Their coexistence allows for a diverse, dynamic, and balanced educational landscape and helps cater to the varied educational needs of the Filipino people. Their complementarity develops and strengthens the educational system. Under a complementary relationship, they share resources and capabilities for promoting education as a fundamental human right. We all know, Mr. Speaker, that HCIs vary in faculty qualifications, infrastructure, and teaching methodologies. This diversity necessitates reasonable supervision and regulation to produce the skilled workforce needed for economic development. Reasonable regulation ensures consistency, quality, adherence to standards, and uniformity of educational achievements across this diverse landscape. Thus, Mr. Speaker, this bill mandates the Commission on Higher Education and other regulatory agencies to provide effective central policy direction and implement programs and mechanisms to ensure that quality education is accessible to all. This reasonable regulation shall focus on, number one, the imposition of reasonable requirements for the establishment of HCIs as well as their conversion into universities; two, setting of the criteria for the issuance of permits to operate and recognition of degree programs; and three, providing incentives and autonomy to HCIs that consistently demonstrate and adhere to the standards of excellence as well as the recognition of Centers of Excellence or COEs and Centers of Development. On providing autonomy and developing COEs and CODs, Mr. Speaker, such is of utmost importance considering that the Second Congressional Commission on Education, or EdCom II, has reported that for the last 20-year period from 2001 to 2021, the number of autonomous HCIs increased by only 36, from 53 to 89. And only 182 out of 2,000 HCIs nationwide have Center of Excellence or Center of Development. Mr. Speaker, while this legislative proposal states that the external governance of all HCIs and their programs, except for the University of the Philippines and the Mindanao State University system, shall be under the oversight function of the CHED, it is also, it also provides that their internal governance shall be left to the respective governing boards and administrative offices. Rest assured, Mr. Speaker, and my fellow legislators, that government regulatory policies do not suppress academic freedom, which is principal to the intellectual growth and development of the people. This bill therefore provides a conducive atmosphere for speculation, experimentation, and creation, where the four essential academic freedoms of the HCIs, such as who may teach, what to teach, how to teach, and who to teach, shall prevail. Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues, in recognition of public and private HCIs as essential players and partners in the educational system, especially in ensuring the continuous learning of the Filipino people to sustain our beloved country's economic growth, I humbly solicit your support for the immediate passage of this measure. Again, thank you very much. At Magandang Gabi po, sa inyo lahat.
Thank you very much Congressman Mark Go, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize Representative Manuel of the Kabataan Partilist for his interpolation.
Congressman Raul Manuel, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Speaker. Would the sponsor yield to a few questions?
Yes, Honorable Manuel.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Unapo, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to seek clarification about the role of CHED should this bill, House Bill Number 9982, will become a law. Mula sa current na function ng CHED, Mr. Speaker, ano ang magiging direksyon? Will CHED have more powers in terms of regulation? Will it have less?
Ang objective po natin dito ay magkakaroon ng setting up of minimum requirements ang CHED for the different HCIs in the country. And for those that are doing well, those who will be considered to be COE or the so-called Center of Excellence and Center of Development, the incentive there for them is there will be minimal supervision on this to the extent that they will be given a free leeway in determining programs that they would like to implement in their respective colleges or universities.
So, kung ganun, Mr. Speaker, ibig sabihin para sa mga higher education institutions na well-performing, ibig sabihin ba ay mababawasan ng trabaho ng CHED sa kanila in terms of supervision or regulation?
That might happen, Honorable Manuel, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, pagdating naman po sa concept na academic freedom dahil noong tingnan po natin ang panukalang batas, mas ang nire-refer po niya na academic freedom ay academic freedom ng mga educational institutions natin. It's more of how they are being empowered to create their own policies as to how they will administer themselves. Mr. Speaker, will the bill also cover, halimbawa, ang academic freedom naman ng say sectors within the learning institution, for example?
Yung pong gusto nating strengthen dito are the public and private education institutions. So, 'yung academic freedom ng mga iba't ibang sektor sa university ay mananatili po yan, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga estudyante at mga guro sa iba't ibang pamantasan ng ating bansa.
Yeah. Mr. Speaker, we are raising that point dahil gusto po nating mas maging encompassing ang ating approach when it comes to academic freedom, lalo na aside from the academic freedom of educational institutions themselves. Edin nandi po ang academic freedom ng iba't ibang sectors. For example, Mr. Speaker, nasa International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights, and to quote Article 13 of that international document, Mr. Speaker, it says that, and I quote, "Members of the academic community, individually or collectively, are free to pursue, develop, and transmit knowledge and ideas through research, teaching, study, discussion, documentation, production, creation, or writing. Academic freedom includes the liberty of individuals to express freely opinions about the institution or system in which they work, to fulfill their functions without discrimination or fear of repression by any state or any other actor, to participate in professional or representative academic bodies, and to enjoy all the internationally recognized human rights applicable to other individuals in the same jurisdiction," end of quote. So, ang point po natin, Mr. Speaker, ang observation po kasi natin may mga pagkakataon na academic institutions use their academic freedom and at times ay bumabangga naman yun sa ano naman ang academic freedom ng mga sectors, may be teachers, personnel, or students. So, ang gusto po nating assurance, Mr. Speaker, is that 'yung academic freedom na gusto nating i-guarantee sa educational institutions would not be abused against dun sa interes ng ating mga sectors.
Definitely, that's not the intent of this particular measure, Honorable Raul Manuel and Mr. Speaker. That's not the intent of this bill, that we will give the academic freedom to the educational institutions at the expense of the other... at the expense of the other sectors in the university. Definitely, we should have equal exercise of academic freedom among all the sectors in the university, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Manuel.
Okay. With that, Mr. Speaker, I'm glad of that assurance and this is where I end my interpolation. Thank you, Honorable Chairperson Mark Go.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no more interpreters, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
There's a motion to close the period of sponsorship and debate? There being no more, no objection? Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The period of amendments is now open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual and committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
There being no individual or committee amendments, the period of amendments is now closed. Any objection? There being none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider for approval on second reading, House Bill Number 9982.
There's, there's a vote. There's a motion that we approve. House Bill 9982. All those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who are not in favor, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9982 is now approved on second reading. Congratulations, Congressman Mark Go and to the Secretary. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we take up admin matters and under that, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 7819 and Senate Bill Number 2492 on declaring the maritime zones under the jurisdiction of the Republic of Philippines. Number one, Representative Maria Rachel Arenas. Number two, Representative Raul Buboy Tupas. Representative Rufus Rodriguez. Representative Neptali Gonzalez. Representative Emidio Tanwatko. Representative Francisco Benitez. Representative Sergio Dagooc. And number eight, finally, Representative Ramon Gutierrez.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 6558 and Senate Bill Number 2386 on instituting reforms in the real property valuation and assessment in the Philippines. Number one, Representative Jonathan Keith Flores. Number two, Representative Loretto Atcharon. Number three, Representative Joey Salceda. Number four, Representative Steve Chong Vian Solon. And number five, Representative Sergio Dagooc. To move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. The motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we change the referral of the following measures. Number one, House Bill Number 1343 from the committee, come from the Committees on Agriculture and Food and Government Enterprises and Privatization to the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion's approved.
Number two, House Bill Number 1479, Violence, Harassment, and Intimidation and Other Criminal Acts Committed Before, During, and After the Conduct of the 2023 Barangay and Sanggonyang Kapataang Elections from the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms to the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
House Bill Number 1497, Allegations of Fraud, Anomalies, and Other Irregularities in the Conduct of the Barangay and Sanggonyang Kapataang Elections on October 30, 2023 from the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms to the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow at 3:00 p.m., March 13.
On what date?
13, 2024.
There's a motion to adjourn session until tomorrow, March 13 at 3:00 in the afternoon. No objection. Session adjourned.